Good afternoon, everyone. How are we doing? A bright sunshine day. Ah, here we go. Patrick, ready to go?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, you're going to hear from Andrew Damon, Deputy Director of Legislative Affairs. Brent McKenzie is stuck in the middle of a session, and he won't be able to pull himself away. So Brent's gonna, so Andrew's gonna give an overview of the General Assembly update and also answer any additional questions that council may have and seek additional guidance from council on a couple items that are percolating.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. Good to see you all. Just a quick note, yeah, Virginia Municipal League has convened their liaisons in Richmond, and Brent is in that meeting regarding some upcoming pending legislation. So today's update, I hope to be brief but not terse. Just want to touch upon some, the remaining status of the legislative agenda items and also some legislation of interest. Starting off, our two remaining legislative agenda items regarding eminent domain proceedings and the Zero Waste Awareness Week have both passed the House, and they will be voted on later on this week in their respective committees in the Senate for Courts of Justice and Senate Rules. For the policy priorities portion of the legislative agenda, just wanted to highlight a few pieces of legislation here, namely the last two rows on flooding and stormwater and also on transportation. Senate Bill 1337 and House Joint Resolution 434 both seek to achieve the same ends. They're just going about it different ways. The only substantive difference between the two is that the Senate bill has the office of, the state office of Commonwealth Resilience, conducting the study for how to examine state support for future CSRM projects for localities, and the House Joint Resolution would direct the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission to do the same thing. For House Bill 2466, under Transportation, it would create the Hampton Roads Interstate Highway Corridor Program and Fund. This is a request from the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and the Transportation Planning Organization, patroned by Delegate Jackie Glass from Norfolk. The bill does not raise the, or create the dedicated sales and use tax, but it does create the fund and puts it on the books of the comp chore. That's just the current posture of the bill. Now, it could be amended in the coming 10 or 12 days, but that's just the current posture of that bill. For the 10-1 legislation, both the House and Senate versions have passed their respective chambers, with the House bills being on second reading today in the Senate, with the Charter Bill requiring a two-thirds affirmative vote to pass, and the Senate bill in the House currently will likely be heard in full House Privileges and Elections Committee on Friday morning because it has passed out of the subcommittee by a vote of five to three. For other legislation of interest, just wanted to highlight a few rows here, namely the top two and then the Memorial Bridge row. We've been reading in the newspapers that license plate readers have been a hot topic of interest. And the bill which would allow for the state police to install flock cameras on interstates, bridge tunnels, and other state roadways, it initially failed in the Senate Committee, but it was brought back for reconsideration, likely to give the patrons some more time to make some amendments and reduce any heartburn that people might have for that bill. Senate Bill 992, I believe that is from Delegate, now Senator Angela Williams Graves. That is akin to the city's legislative agenda item from the RAC regarding the wares and display of items in the public right-of-way. The main difference is that this bill would require any person who enters a waiver of trial and admits liability time to remedy that violation within a period of time specified by the locality. That is no less than 30 days but no more than two years from the date of admission. And then lastly, we have the Memorial Bridge item designating the bridge over Rosemont Road in honor of Chevy Chivirati. It passed unanimously out of the House. It's going to be heard in Senate Transportation Committee on Thursday, and we anticipate the same fate for that in the Senate.
Okay, any discussions or questions? Okay, good. Now, we got a second part here?
No, Mr. Mayor, this is, the floor is for you. If you have any questions on the market salary survey.
Any questions? Yeah. We don't see any. Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, due to the weather in Washington DC, our consultant was not able to make the draft down, so they're going to participate via Webex and give the overview of the market salary survey and be available to answer any questions that you may have.
And if we can hold questions since this is Webex, can we hold our questions till the end? That way, we don't have any technical challenges.
Yep, that would be ideal, but Monica, I don't know if you want to start off before?
I am. I have a, I have a brief intro before we get to Siegel, Patrick Bracken. Good afternoon. My name is Monica Copan. I'm the Director of HR for Talent Acquisition and Workforce Development. We have with us today Patrick Bracken from the Siegel Group. He is, as the city manager indicated, participating remotely from Northern Virginia. They're having a weather event up there that prevented him from coming down. And before I hand off to Patrick, I was just going to give you guys a brief overview of where we are presently and how we got here. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing us this time to bring you this information. We know you got the information also in your council packet, but we want to make sure that you have a good understanding of what you're reading. So, this is not our first engagement with Siegel. I want to make sure that you guys kind of know that we also contracted with Siegel in 2021 to do a market salary survey. At that time, we had not had a market salary survey since 2011, so we were 10 years in the making. And for all good intents, 2021 was, turned out to not be the ideal time to do a market salary survey. At the end of the year, the, the world was recovering from COVID, and no one could have predicted the huge impact that had on the labor market and our competitiveness in the labor market, or anyone's competitiveness in the labor market. So, Siegel was doing a survey about the same time as what was affectionately or not affectionately coined, "The Great Resignation." And they delivered their findings in February of 2022, about the same time three years ago. And at that time, they were also directed to, in addition to continue to explore the market, also create a step plan for the city. So, on July 1 of 2022, the city invested about $32 million to implement that step plan and implement the market findings, but we found that we were already a little bit behind because the, the market was responding pretty quickly to what was going on in the world in order to remain competitive. So, since then, the city has addressed periodically some needs that have arisen that we had to go ahead and take care of, but we weren't able to do a more holistic review of the city absent a market salary survey. So, for example, we did go ahead and we made some adjustments to our CDL driver positions, some of our clinician positions over in Human Services. We initiated a lot of hiring bonuses, a lot of retention bonuses to be responsive and competitive in the market. And then, last year, you as a body had directed and funded an additional market salary survey or total compensation study, if you will. So, that brings us to present. Part of the ask from City Council was that two costing models be developed, one that would represent what the city, or what the cost would be if the city were to remain competitive in the market, and another to cost, or give us the cost of what it would be if we decided to adopt a comp philosophy of leading the market. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Patrick Bracken. Patrick is the Senior Vice President in, at Siegel. He's got 20-plus years of experience in compensation design, market salary study surveys. He's a certified compensation professional, and he works very closely in the public sector. So, Patrick?
Thank you, Monica, for that introduction. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. And apologies for not being able to join you in person. As was noted, weather has gotten in the way, but I do appreciate the opportunity to brief you today on Siegel's work in partnership with the city on this important total compensation study. Do you mind moving to the next slide? For today's agenda, we have three main topics. We first want to orient the group to the goals, timeline, and methodology that governed our engagement, and talk with you in some detail about the findings of our analysis, and then close out with some of the recommendations that we've jointly developed with the city for your consideration. I think, as noted at the beginning of the presentation today, it will be easier if we hold all questions to the end, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have. So, for starters, for those that haven't been part of a compensation market study process before, the, the goals of such an engagement, first and foremost, are to measure the city's competitive positioning in the marketplace. And what we mean by this is, in conjunction with the city's leadership team, we identify what we call a labor market, and then we use that information to help us survey how competitive the city of Virginia Beach's current pay structures, but in this case, also benefit and pay policies are compared to prevailing trends in the marketplace. And this really helps us kind of understand the current state in terms of how does Virginia Beach compare, and that serves as the platform for identifying opportunities for improvement, both improvement in the kind of what we call direct compensation space, so that could be things around the pay structures, but also around benefits and pay policies and opportunities for improvement there. The overarching goal is still to make sure that the city can remain competitive and can recruit and retain the key talented staff that it needs to perform its daily operations. From a timeline perspective, you can see that we, we started this project in August of last year. We had roughly five months or so to conduct a really robust analysis and survey of the marketplace. This started with our project initiation phase, which really covers some of the blocking and tackling around the peer group development, the benchmark jobs, and the survey parameters. Once we nailed all that down with Monica and her team, we then administered that survey. Siegel does a direct liaison ship with the peer employers, meaning that once we develop that survey and distribute it, we do all of that work to collect their information, which can come in a variety of forms. In, in some cases, peer employers provide us a direct response to the survey. In other cases, they may appoint us to source information that they have, either on their websites or information they provide to us directly. But I point all this out, just, the data collection effort is intensive and exhaustive. We, we spend a lot of time collecting and validating this information, and it can get complicated because we're talking about not only the pay structures but also the benefit offerings and pay policies. In all, we had a, a very strong response rate to the survey, and overall, Siegel was very pleased with the completeness of the information, and we feel really confident that we've collected and validated the information such that our recommendations are predicated on a very solid foundation. Next slide, please. So, as folks in the room probably know, the city of Virginia Beach has multiple pay scales. Our survey covered both the general government pay scales, which are G, A, and H, as well as the public safety pay scales, Y and Z. And you can see some distributional statistics here in terms of the number of employees covered by each of those pay scales, but we just wanted to point this out for the group so that you understood that this survey was comprehensive and that we looked at all of the pay scales with the note of the exclusion of the state employees, constitutional officers, city council appointees, and elected officials. Those four groups were not covered by our survey. Next slide. So, the elements of a total compensation survey, and this is kind of high level, really start off with what we call pay ranges. Pay ranges are minimums and maximums that a lot of employers publish, associated with a particular job function. We, we collected that information, but we also looked at compensation policies and practices, paid time off. So, these are things like vacation, holiday, sick leave, and the like, health benefits, which include medical but also dental and vision, retirement benefits, and then supplemental benefits such as flexible work arrangements or tuition reimbursement policies, and assortment of other categories that I have a slide on later. Next slide. I mentioned earlier that as part of the project initiation, one of the key questions that we worked with Virginia Beach on, related to the labor market for which city, the city competes for talent. And commensurate with what we had done last time, the, the thinking here was that there were three major sectors that the city of Virginia Beach competes. The first is what we're calling the Virginia Sector or kind of in-state, and you can see listed on the table there, the employers that were considered as part of the Virginia market. We then have what we call the Outside Virginia, so this is, as denoted, sort of outside Virginia municipalities, so these span anywhere from Texas to Kansas to Minnesota. And then the third sector is the private sector, and we had a variety of published data sources. These are sources that Siegel purchases as part of our compensation work around the country that reflect private sector prevailing compensation information. I wanted to point out that the jurisdictions that were outside Virginia, we did apply some data metrics to that, primarily related to a population, the cost of living, median household income, and home value as parameters that were considered in the determination of the outside Virginia peer employers. And then lastly, oh, sorry. Lastly, just as a technical note, anything that was outside Virginia in terms of compensation data, we do adjust for geographic differences. So, Siegel purchases a tool that is an econometric assessor that allows us to equalize for differences in the cost of labor between geographic regions. This is a common methodology we use with our clients when, like you all, you have a variety of both kind of local area peer employers but also non-geographically proximate peers, and we want to make sure that we have an apples-to-apples comparison for those compensation comparisons. And so, for anything that was outside of Virginia, we did adjust to Virginia Beach. Next slide, please. I now like to talk a little bit about findings, and we're going to start first with the pay rate and pay policy piece. Next slide, please. So, I'll just take a minute to explain how we think about market competitiveness. So, when we are deriving the market data comparisons, the first thing we look at is the market averages for all of the benchmark jobs. And when I say benchmark jobs, what I mean by that is that there were roughly about 150 job titles that Siegel worked jointly with the city to identify as those job titles that we could survey in the marketplace. And there are parameters around by which the selection of benchmark jobs is governed, but the basic principles are that we want to make sure the benchmark jobs are common, meaning that we are likely to find them among the peer employers. So, said another way, we don't want to pick overly unique job functions at Virginia Beach because we don't think that we're going to find an analog at the peer employer. We also want to make sure that those jobs are highly populated, meaning we want to get as many employees as possible covered by the benchmark jobs. We also want to make sure that we are representative of the variety of departments, divisions, employee groupings, so that the cross-section of benchmark jobs can be inferred to be as cross-sectional as possible across the wide range of job functions across the city's workforce. And so, in all, we had about 150 benchmark jobs, and when defining those market averages, we first take an average of the Virginia information. We then blend that with the, I'm sorry, I should clarify, the Virginia and the outside Virginia information, so this is the custom survey information, and then we blend that with the private sector information to create a composite market average. And then, once we have that market average, we then compare the city of Virginia Beach pay ranges to that average. And that, what we call market ratio, it's defined here at the bottom of the slide, is the Virginia Beach pay rate for a particular job compared to the market average pay rate. And those are percentages because it's a market ratio, and if those percentages fall between 95% and 105% of the market average, we consider that market competitive. Said a different way, our market competitive corridor is 95% of the average to 105% of the average. So, when we think about that definition as the market competitive corridor, anything less than 95% would be considered below market, and then anything greater than 105%, again, of the average, is considered above market. And when we take that kind of paradigm for looking at the market data, and we overlay it with, and on this slide, we're showing all of the public sector data in the far-left column, the public sector for Virginia only in the middle, and then public sector for the outside of Virginia, you can see that across all benchmark jobs, again, this is an aggregate, that the city of Virginia pay ranges are in that market competitive corridor, meaning that they're falling between that 95% and 105%. So, this is an important concept when you think about contextualizing the Siegel analysis is, we have this corridor of market competitiveness, and then depending on how we group jobs and compare it to the market average, we can draw conclusions about how competitive the current pay ranges are. However, that doesn't tell the whole, the whole story. If we can go to the next slide, you can see that the market ratio begins to vary when we break it down by the type of pay structure. So, in this case, if you look at the general and hourly structure, the administrative structure, the public safety structure, and the public safety management structures, again, under that same definition of market competitiveness, the, the story's a little more mixed. We see that the public safety and the public safety management groups tend to drop below that 95%, whereas the general and administrative schedules are still in that market competitive pay range. Additionally, the story gets a little more nuanced when you start to look at the market competitiveness by the benchmark job level. And so, what we've done here for ease of viewing is grouped all of the 150 or so jobs that we've surveyed into, first, we're showing the below-market jobs, so there were 58 job titles that were at least 5% lagging the market. So, this is that below 95% corridor, and we just have these alphabetical for the next couple slides. And then, kind of in combination with that, we then broke out the jobs that are at market. So, these are jobs that are in that market competitive corridor of 95 to 105%, and the count of these job titles is 61 jobs. So, we had 58 jobs that were below market, 61 jobs that are in that market competitive corridor. And then, if we skip to the next above-market jobs, we have 33 jobs that are greater than the 5%. And so, these are just listed again in alphabetical order. So, for the group's consideration, we had 58 jobs that were below market, 61 that were market competitive, and 33 that were above. So, not quite a rough, sorry, an even distribution, but generally speaking, you've got roughly half of the jobs at market competitive and below market, and then the 33 jobs that are above market. We'll go to the next slide. We want to show then, from the public safety market comparison perspective, we put together this graphic to help highlight some of the key findings around both the, on the left, the police officer and the firefighter. So, what we've done here is in the teal bars, that is the Virginia Beach pay range information. In the dark blue is the market average. You can see when comparing the police officer one and firefighter, both of those job classifications lag, and this is at the entry rate, lag the market averages for the corresponding job roles. So, for example, the police officer is at $52,280 for Virginia Beach, and the market average is $58,302. Similarly, for the firefighter, $52,280 for entry rates for the firefighter compared to a market average of $58,823. Similarly, if you look to the right, combination of bars, that then starts to analyze the pay range midpoints instead of entry rates for the master police officer, master firefighter, sergeant, captain, lieutenant, battalion officer, and police captain. And you can see that generally speaking, there is a lag that is occurring when you compare the pay range midpoints for Virginia Beach to the market average pay range midpoints for these classifications. I mentioned in my remarks that we also collect information on pay policies. Just to break down a couple of our key findings here, when we think about what we consider kind of standard pay increase options that public sector employers consider, we think of that in two major categories. One is individual performance, and the other is a step or what we call a general wage increase, a GWI. And about a half of the peer employers use individual performance, which I believe that also the city of Virginia Beach uses, performance metrics for pay increase processes. And then, as Monica mentioned at the beginning, some of the scales also with step increases. So, we do find that those two policies are in line with what we're seeing among market practices. In terms of other pay adjustments, we have some, some distributional statistics here of how common some of these are. Promotional increases, it makes a lot of sense that for your peer group, when folks are receiving promotions, that is associated with a pay increase. Similarly, with reclassification, so this is when an employee goes through a reclassification process, are there pay adjustments associated with that? Predominantly, yes. About, a little more than two-thirds of employers have spot awards or bonuses, and then about half have off-cycle increases. So, depending on how they manage their human capital and their pay increase processes, about half have opportunities for mid-cycle or off-cycle adjustments. Next slide. Thank you. So, now I'll talk a little bit about paid leave and the benefit findings. So, starting with paid leave, we collected information on all of the major types of paid leave that is offered for the Virginia and outside Virginia peer employers. And what we've done on this slide is tried to show a comparison that varies by year of service. And you might ask, well, why are you interested in looking at it by year of service? The reason is that most paid leave programs, at least in terms of vacation, the amount of days that are allotted to an employee increases with years of service. So, although we could look at this kind of at a static, you know, X number of years of service, we thought that it's also valuable to look at this in terms of the accrual of those paid leave days. And when you think about it through that lens, we have three lines on the chart. The bottom line, the body green, green bottom dotted line is the city of Virginia Beach accrual rate, and this is for total paid leave, which is defined as PTO or vacation, because depending on the employee type at Virginia Beach, there, there are different leave programs, sick leave, personal days, and paid holidays. So, when you sum all of those days and you array it by the years of service, the blue line or the teal line is the outside Virginia peer employer comparison line, and then the top orange line is the Virginia peer employer. And the real key takeaway here is, you know, at entry, meaning that year of service one, all the way through 25+, Virginia Beach's paid leave program does lag those paid leave programs at both the outside Virginia and the Virginia peer employers. Now, talking a little bit about health benefits, we collected a bunch of information on premium information associated with primarily the Point of Service Plan, the POS Plan, and the CDHP or the Consumer Driven Health Plan, or the High Deductible Health CDHP, or the Consumer Driven Health Plan, or the High Deductible Health Plan, HDHP. On this slide, we have a comparison of the employee-only coverage, so we're kind of colloquially known as single coverage. Virginia Beach employees pay less for those health-related benefits compared to the other Virginia peers. But it does bounce around a little bit, as you can see in the colored bars. The far green bar on the left is Virginia Beach, and you can compare it to those averages to the right. Similarly, on the CDHP, there, kind of depending on who you're comparing to, there is a slightly less of an employee required contribution for that employee-only coverage. Next slide. Kind of corollary to this slide, but now for family coverage, because although there are multiple tiers, we looked for today's presentation at single coverage and then family coverage. Here, what we're finding is that city of Virginia Beach employees' monthly costs are slightly greater than the other Virginia peer employers. But again, you can see the comparisons in the bars here from the green bar to the colored bars to the right. Next slide. When looking at retirement, we've, for today's purposes, we want to look at the primary plan that was offered to new employees. Most of our surveyed Virginia employers participate in VRS, the Virginia Retirement System. Outside Virginia, the defined benefit pension plan is still the predominant option. Private sector employers are more likely to offer a defined contribution plan only. We don't see a lot of defined benefit plans in the private sector. There are some, but generally speaking, the public sector tends to be the dominant sector that offers that type of retirement option. And that is consistent with the city of Virginia Beach. And then when looking at contribution rates for the retirement plans, just based on the most recent year's actuarial, actuarially determined employer contribution, that is somewhat higher than the average of what we saw for both Virginia and outside Virginia municipalities, but the employee contribution of 5% was, was the same. Next slide. So talking a little bit about additional benefits and flexible work arrangements, well, what we found was that most of the organizations that we surveyed provide supplemental benefits around tuition or education assistance, continuing education or professional development, as well as relocation assistance for executive levels. So those three types of supplemental benefits, we found of strong evidence that they exist among the peers. Additionally, it was a little bit more of a mixed bag, but for remote work policies, they exist among the peer group for allowing remote work, as well as compressed work weeks or flexible hour or flexible work arrangements. Something more and more common that we've seen in, in the public sector, of course, it's been a bit of a mixed bag as, you know, we kind of left the COVID era, but those policies do still remain among some of the peers. And Virginia Beach has pieces of these as well. And then lastly, just in terms of personal computers or home office equipment, that was a pretty minor subset of the survey group. Similarly, with gym memberships and student loans, not as predominant. Now, we've got some data here on the prevalence of those policies. You can see, kind of working from left to right, you see the, the most predominant is how we ordered this, education and tuition assistance, and that, when we have an asterisk here, that indicates that it's offered by Virginia Beach. Both that, continuing ed, as well as relocation are all offered by, by Virginia Beach, and then also by the other public sector peers that we surveyed. And then those other three to the right become a little less predominant. And we also included here, if you're interested, some of private sec, private sector data that we have on those. No, thank you. You can go to the next slide. And then just rounding out some of the data we had on prevalence of the flexible work arrangements for telework and flex time and compressed work week, you can see here that fairly predominant, certainly for telework, flex time and compressed week, about half of the public sector peers have those. And then, just closing out with our recommendations, as Monica mentioned at the introduction, we had, we had the two options that we were asked to model for the city's consideration. The first, and can we go to the next slide, please? The first option is what we were calling the at-market scenario. And this scenario is predicated on the notion that all job functions that we benchmarked, and then the correlated non-benchmark jobs, right? So I mentioned there's about 150 jobs that we surveyed. City of Virginia Beach links those jobs to non-benchmark jobs from an internal equity perspective, and provided that information to Segal in our analysis. And with both the benchmark jobs and then the linked non-benchmark jobs, and then applying the paradigm that no job is less than 95% of the market average, that creates a scenario where about 45, sorry, 48% of employees would receive an increase to meet that, to meet that, that philosophic determination of 95% of the market average, at least no less than. And that cost would be about $21.5 million, or about 4.55% of payroll. Now, that number does exclude the pay-related fringe benefit costs, and I think Monica and her team could provide some context on that number if you were interested, but just from a purely pay scale perspective, that would be the scenario one effect. Scenario two was a leading the market perspective. And this was determined to be defined as ensuring that all jobs are paid at least 105% of that market average. And when applying that philosophic paradigm, the impact there is about 76% of employees would receive an increase, and the cost of that action would be $55.5 million, or 11.75% of payroll. So the thinking here was that, just based on the market data that we've collected, and then the direction of creating two scenarios, one that is kind of a meeting the market, and then one that is a leading the market, we wanted to then provide this group with that preliminary analysis, as well as the associated costs with those, with those options. So with that, I think I'd like to pause and then see if you have any questions about today's presentation.
Okay, any questions? Cash, and then Stacy.
Mr. Patrick, thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it. Just a little clarity, I didn't see the, the word janitorial on your competitive job title. And maybe it's with grounds crew leader? Is that the same?
I think the title the city uses is generally custodian. Custodial worker. And it's on page 14. It's one of the benchmarks that are within 95 to 105% of the market. So custodial workers list at 102% of market.
Okay. Hey, Stacy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. One is, was overtime considered in the pay factors?
It was not. We looked at pay range information only.
Could not overtime be a pretty significant factor in what people make?
Yes, for those employees that work over 40 hours, it is a significant factor.
The other question I have is, in my experience, a number of employees would prefer to have more PTO than to have more compensation. Is, your recommendations didn't, I guess, address maybe increasing benefits such as PTO versus increasing compensation? Is that something you wouldn't look at?
We certainly found a gap in the paid leave offerings that Virginia Beach has relative to the marketplace. And generally speaking, those are easier to administer changes to. So I think our recommendation would be to certainly look at that, although we would ask a lot of our clients to look at utilization of leave as well, right? Just to make sure that, in fact, employees are utilizing, you know, the vast majority of the leave they're entitled. And then when there is a gap, we, we think that that's a competitive opportunity for improvement for the, for consideration.
And there is a, a gap in how PTO is handled in the city as well. You have employees that were on the old program that get the benefit of vacation and sick. And then you have the other employees that are all lump sum, you know? There tends to be concern from the newer employees that are on the newer scale that all are in one PTO bucket, you know? And in, in their interpretation, some feels that the old plan was more generous.
Okay, Rosemary and Hutch.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patrick. This is a real eye-opener, and I'm sure our employees are like every other citizen across this country that are being squeezed by the inflation. Like, every time I turn around, something, at least for me, has gone up. I kind of feel that the, this went up. Everything, the energy is just raising their prices astronomically. And I'm, all of that is affecting our employees as well. And I think that we're not paying them competitively on top of it. It's pretty disturbing. In the past, pretty much, we've always given a blanket salary increase, whether it's 3%, 4% to everyone. But here, we've got all different levels. Some people are paying above-market, and some people are being below-market. Are you thinking about, Mr. Manager, having a different type of pay raise this time? That's, that's more fitting with what the survey is saying?
All options are on the table. I think the big thing that we're trying to figure out right now is to be mindful of council's spirit of what council acts for in a council retreat, right? Council acts that we be mindful of the residential property tax rate. We explore other non-residential property tax-related revenue items. We think about stretching the CIP, understanding that we got to close about a billion-dollar gap there. And then, even if you stretch the CIP, there's still going to be other elements of the CIP that we still have to address. So try to find revenue resources within the already allocated budget to cover that and cover the market salary survey is something that is incredibly challenging. We are identifying options, understanding that council previously, in 2021, we put 80% of employees on a, on a step plan, right? And if the moment you miss a step, then in essence, employees feel like they've lost out on 3% one year, but then the next year, they'll feel like they're 6% behind. So what we're trying to be mindful of is, consider the step plan and keep in spirit with that intent and do that step increase, which is 3%. And then try to identify opportunities to impact those employees that this study have showed is below the market, right? So that's approximately 48% of the market. So trying to figure out, Vice Mayor, to your point, is there a way of giving employees an increase based on their step plan, based on inflation, which is kind of around 3%? And then also, address the core of the market salary survey findings, which says 48% of the workforce are below-market, to see if there's something that we could do to target that pay scale? And then try to figure out a way to do that within the guidelines that council kind of authorized to us, which is stay within the bucket of revenue resources we have, but it's okay to look at non-residential options, but just be mindful of the affordability issues that are impacting the entire workforce. So we are trying to, but trying to balance it all as well, considering that any action we take here could impact delivery of the CIP.
And the other thing, I just want, one more comment is, some of this should not really be a surprise to us, because our public safety people have been telling us that they don't have as much time off as other localities, and they're not being paid as much, so.
Okay, Hutch, and then Josh.
So, thank you, Vice Mayor. I think you're doing very well, hitting one on the head where we're.
And Patrick and Director Copan, thank you. I think this was a very fair assessment, and we appreciate it. As some of us have been saying for quite a while, some of it we kind of knew, but others we didn't. So I appreciate that. One of the things, we don't have to go to the slide, but slide 20 does say that we are six to eight days behind on the PTO. So, I mean, I don't know if that'll, I don't know what this is all going to look like in the end, but, I mean, I think it's clearly stating what the councilman is saying beside me, is so that's something that should be addressed. But then the other is, that I want to, I definitely want to just speak to for a second is, we can talk about overtime, but let's remember, those folks that are working the overtime are then not with their families. So, yes, they're being compensated for it, but they are working it. And, Mr. Manager, I would say, I'd ask you, I know, I don't know the exact number, but when the percentage is, it's, it's less expensive to have some of the overtime, right? But then it's, becomes cost preventative when it gets to be too much. So I don't know where that falls, but that would be something that would, like, do you need anything else added to this equation? But, but that's just something that I think, if you're going to look at that, you got to look at that whole picture. That's all I would ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for the update. I, I concur that we've, we've got to identify the folks who are being, I guess, most underpaid as it, as it compares to our competitor markets, and, and with special emphasis on, on public safety. And I, I also, I'm kind of curious how we got so far out of whack on the, the top side, I guess, employer, employee classifications, like ones where we're paying in excess of 110% of what, I guess, peer markets pay. And, and I'm sure there's probably good reason for it, because we're trying to attract, like, difficult, higher positions, like, I know we had a lifeguard, lifeguard shortage, for example, and I saw that that was one of the categories listed, but, but yeah, I mean, looking at the number, the $21.5 million to bring the 48% of the employee, yeah, that, I mean, and my math isn't right, that is basically six cents of the real estate tax if you, like, because half goes to school. So, just to kind of put that in perspective, because we're talking about adding recurring expense year to year, and I'm not obviously saying that we, you know, increase the tax to take over this or whatever, but I'm just trying to put it in the magnitude for everybody to think about, that's six cents of a, of a dollar.
And then to clarify, too, if you add fringes to it, it's probably closer to 28, 30 million as well, right? You know, but also just acknowledge as well that all of it is not shared by the general fund, probably 85% of that cost will be covered by the general fund, probably 10% to 15% will be covered by the enterprise funds as well, you know? But in full context, it's probably, once you add fringes to it, it's probably closer to 28, 30. And that's just the market salary survey. But obviously, if we take a methodology where we're targeting those that don't meet, it's more like, that'll be 48% of the workforce, right? So that's before you even look at the rest of the, the other employees that would likely probably need an inflationary increase to keep it, keep it aligned with COLA.
And just one really quick follow-up, but the, the PTO, I know we're, I guess, underperforming, but I'm, I'm looking at these numbers, does, does that mean that a 10-year employee right now would get roughly 40 days off a year? Out of 40 days off in a given year?
No.
No. So we don't.
So this is, this is our hybrid employees. I want to clarify, too, that this is not our VRS one employees, so this is not indicative of anyone that was hired before 2014 or in public safety. They get annual leave and sick leave. So we're comparing PTO, and that if you're a 10-year, it looks like, Patrick.
It's 30. Yeah.
30.
38.
38.
38, yep.
Okay. I mean, I, that's just my, my own value judgment. I, I think that's, you know, that's pretty good. And if we're, and if we're below, obviously, our, our peers, then, you know, no argument with that, but I, I would think of a month or more off is pretty good.
I think that, and I tried to, and I, I probably used the wrong vocabulary. What I tried to explain was, there's, there's VRS tier one, which Monica was talking about, and then there's the, the newer employees like me. Tier one, you get a combination of- Tier one, you get a combination of vacation and then sick, right? And that could separate bucket, bigger thing with tier two employees, you get one bucket, right? You know, so the thirty eight days is also your sick time as well as your vacation time, whereas other employees, they get to accumulate, they get to accumulate or out or grow both pots of the bucket, right? So there's a, there's a discrepancy or interpretation amongst some employees, especially the newer ones feeling that there's a benefit that the tier one employees have that the tier two employees don't have, right? So it's not necessarily, is this grass is green on the other side kind of mindset sometimes?
Well, and I know public, certain sectors of public safety, you keep track of their time off incredibly different. I think I gotta think.
They're in the tier one.
On the head of a pen that even like.
Like, for example, a firefighter, a day off is twenty four hours automatically taken away from their um sick or leave ballots. You know, whereas a day off for an administrative employee or hourly employee is eight hours, right? Yeah.
And most of our municipal comparators, they have annual leave and sick leave. So the combined PTO program is a little bit more prevalent in the private sector. But with that, our employees are also eligible for short term, long term disability as a part of that VRS hybrid program, which is something that's not accessible to the VRS employees that receive annual and sick leave.
Okay, Jennifer, then Rosemary and Worth.
Uh, two things. The first, on page twenty seven or slide twenty seven, uh, this asterisk indicates benefit offered by Virginia Beach City employees. There are no asterisks on that slide.
That's that's wrong.
So we.
That's that's inaccurate. We offer all three of those things. We just missed the asterisk.
Thank you for that clarification. And then secondly, um, just to reiterate what's been mentioned a few times. Um, I've been thinking about this because of all that's happening at the federal level with the public administrators and the workforce and that a lot of the work of the government is the work of people. So government doesn't exist, like these services can't happen if we don't have qualified and competent employees to do them. So if we have the capacity at thinking even about the CIP, I know public safety was one of the things that was emphasized over and over again about something we need to make sure we're budgeting for. Public safety includes um the men and women who serve us, uh, so EMS, fire, police, and I know even education because for the new folks that came on, this really came out out of the collective bargaining conversation. So we didn't end up going the collective bargaining route, but we said we're gonna do this public, this market's uh survey. And it says what we were told, which is that um I'm sure, I don't know what the school board is gonna do, um, but our educators are underpaid, police are underpaid, fires underpaid, and there are some of, in my opinion, are critical services that we offer. So um as part of the budget and part of the CIP, I just don't see how we offer quality services without having the workforce to do it. So um just offering that addition to the comments y'all have already mentioned. Thank you.
Hey, Rosemary and Worth.
This is just the tip of the iceberg. The more we dig into this, I think the more complicated we're gonna realize it is and it's it's, a few years ago, when we implemented the step plan, we thought, okay, we fixed compression. We're all excited. Starting pay for firefighters and police officers, wait, six thousand of neighboring cities. You just boost it up. What does that do to the whole compression thing again? Which is really affects the entire columns of people we pay to. This is, it's not easy.
The vice mayor is complicated to your point, right? Because if you hit one, it's a domino and you're gonna have to hit the other ones as well. And just to kind of put it in context, last um time we did this in twenty twenty one before Great Resignation started, that was around thirty to thirty three million dollars that council put, and that covered everybody, more or less said everybody got a five percent increase, right? A three percent increase now is roughly sixteen million dollars in pay. And that market salary survey, when you look at it, that's um twenty one, about thirty million dollars right there, right? So this this market salary survey by itself doesn't get us the same value of what it bought for the same dollar value of what it is today right now, right? So we're gonna be trying to figure out a way to give employees a cost of living increase close to COLA, but then also try to tackle this nugget as well for those employees who are who the market salary survey said are are below market, you know? So this is gonna be a difficult thing to put together and then also to your point, and also to be mindful of the compression it caused when you hit one group that may be saying that, that the stat study is saying is underpaid, but all of a sudden now you have a entry level employee right on the heels of their supervisor.
Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer, for the presentation. This is the following question. We'll do this conversation. So this question is to you, Mr. Manager. Given some of these discrepancies, some of the department heads, and I don't, and the second question is, is it too late for this budget cycle? So but the first question is, can some of the depart, some of these department heads make a salary adjustment and not be for the entire workforce, but just sa- save for public safety, increase their salaries more than three percent, more than the step planned in keeping with the market? And then second, is it too late for this year or is it?
It'll probably, it's something that's probably best taken up as part of the budget, right? Especially, I wouldn't say it's too late, but I kind of feel like it is because you're on that, you're on the other side of the apex of the of the roller coaster, right? You know, we got less, we got less months into the fiscal, left of the fiscal year than we do on the other side of it. So I would say it'd be something that we take up as part of the um the full budget picture.
It's not too late for the next budget.
No, no, not too late for the budget we're working on right now. So the budget we're presenting to you all, it's not too late for that. And it's something that Kevin and I are trying to work on the right package to bring to you all in light of the discussion that we had two weeks ago as well, you know? So we got some ideas to address some of all of this, but I don't know if we got enough resources to hit every absolutely thing that we got.
Hey, anybody else?
All right, let me say this and you know, put my hat on, you know, I over at Richard University, I teach a course in human resources management. And that we are not only in competition with other cities, we're also in competition with the private sector through a lot of this stuff. Private sector can pay a lot more. They just raise the price of the widgets and that's it. We don't have that luxury. But you know, let me say this, and maybe I go down a little bit of the slippery slope. You know, being a beneficiary of having gone to both the police and fire citizens academies, you know, the type of work that they do is very, very unique in very, very many ways. And you know, a couple of years ago, we took it apart ourselves and put them on a step system. And it, I think it had a significant improvement with recruitment and retention. So the actions that we take do work and, you know, maybe this is, uh, you know, a little bit of a slippery slope, but given the nature of the work that police and fire do and being in harm's way, working in shift work, working, you know, in some hairy situations sometime, you know, in the Marine Corps and in the military, we used to get combat pay, hazardous duty pay, jump pay, you know, things of that nature. Would it be, yeah, at least a little bit of a compromise if we had a hybrid about the two situations and took care of really an immediate thing? And don't get me wrong, I truly value every employee here. But when you think about the nature of work that our public safety do and literally putting their lives on the line and, you know, like I said, you know, working shift work and, you know, just changing work in holidays, weekends, you know, but once again, you know, give them at least a consideration and uh, you know, if we can work it out. But, you know, Patrick, I'll tell you what, it's uh, you know, uh, you know, you know, it's the challenges that we've had before. This is probably our worst one. We said that at the beginning of the thing. You know, see what, see what we can do. And uh, I think you know the objective, but you know, but you know, and you know, I agree with Jennifer, human capital is an extremely important thing. But also it's reject, because recruitment and retention, why do people move? You know, why are people at police coming here from other cities? Because it was better. But once again, I think the idea there are certain things and, you know, we're having trouble, I understand, finding engineers and, you know, things of that nature. There are just certain job classifications that are essential that we have to have for the efficiency of, you know, what we're doing. And if we're gonna maintain the reputation of being the safest city and one of the best cities and maintain the quality of life, you know, I think uh, you know, it's gonna be a tough, it's gonna be squeezing a balloon. And uh, let's go ahead and, you know, start squeezing. Okay, Stacy, did you have something?
Is it, somebody asked a question earlier, you know, that how do we find ourselves in this position? A few years ago, we were at the top of the scale. A few years down the road, here we are, struggling to keep up. Is this study, is the work that was studied to study something that we could look at bringing in-house so that we're constantly on top of what the market is?
So we do this every year. Monica's team looks at particular classifications, but Monica, how many classifications do we have? Job classifications?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, this is also the same HR team that does the hiring, right? You know, all the employee evaluations, all the employee relations, all the investigations as well. So they do look at a subset of them annually as well, right? So for example, when we realized we were having issues with our um commercial driver license folks, right, across all the different departments, they looked at that one and adjusted to market. So that's why you don't see that one is below. But the ability to look at all seven hundred plus classifications every year is not something we have the capability for. HR acts probably every year for three to four positions to help enhance their bandwidth and we're not usually able to afford it to stay, to keep the city affordable and meet the other operational needs of the city as well. So I don't think it's something that you could probably get in the, for us to do every year for every classification. We do target it, you know? I would say this. One of the big reasons why the city is in this situation now is, as Monica mentioned, when the city did its market salary survey in twenty twenty one, we were the first one out the gates, right? And then in twenty twenty two, when the great resignation started, everybody started giving all those enhanced increases on top of what we already did. You know, I'm actually surprised it's not worse than what it is right now, you know? But it's, that's some of the reasons why we're there is that this was just a a tremendous shift in the entire market as well in terms of compensation to employees. And we just had the unfortunate um opportunity of being one of the first ones out the door in terms of when we started to make our adjustments and then everybody else goes on top of ours. And then some of the um market salary survey reactions that our peer institutions have done in a region as well actually targets their compensation to what Virginia Beach does as well to go on top of ours as well. So that's some of the reasons why we're here.
You know, another fact, Stacy, that um a lot of the cities, uh, you know, we we are for, we are blessed that we did not our percentage of vacancy for public safety wasn't as bad as a lot of, but some cities were, you know, fifty percent below in FTEs with not with not part of the pop, not the population we have. So they really had to step up their game just to recruit people to come and so they, you know, can get a bare minimum. So they really, you know, you know, uh, you know, did a lot of things. But, you know, we're fortunate, you know, that that we have what we have because I can tell you a lot of the cities in this country don't have it. Yeah, Amelia.
The cost of this again. Because that's what we have to look at as well.
Yep. All right, so um I just want to say for context again, okay, I also want to say for context again, if you look at the prevailing um finding is that across all benchmark jobs, the city salary range midpoints are competitive with the public sector, equal to Virginia Beach market one hundred percent and slightly under outside market of ninety six percent. So as a whole, if you look at the seven hundred classifications, we're in a good spot, right? Ninety six percent outside of Virginia Beach, a hundred percent in Virginia, right? So we're in a good spot. We do have some areas that we need to work on. The cost to meet the market right now, um, Segal is saying is twenty one point five just on the payroll side. But to cover the cost of the fringe benefits associated with it, it's probably more like twenty eight, thirty million dollars, right? You know? And that's before you touch, you know, the rest, the rest of the workforce as well, right? You know, so those are some of the things that we're trying to navigate.
Okay, Amelia, Michael Worth. Michael Worth.
Thank you. Uh, I have a question. So um, I think I understand the information that's been presented to us. What I, what I'm curious about is if you could expand a little further on how some of our cooperating agencies, for example, sheriff's office is part of the public safety infrastructure as well. And how does that fit into this landscape or let's say the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office or some of the other, that's public safety specific, but even more broadly are um partners in public service.
So the constitutional offices are included as this as well, right? So sheriff deputies will be included and in this as well. So um, I think, Monica, you're gonna correct me if I'm wrong, we did ask Segal to take into account council's policy on parity, right? So if council's doing something for police officers, that the savings happening for deputies, right? Sheriffs and sheriff deputies, firefighters and also EMS employees as well. So I think that's currently included in the.
We did, we included the sheriff is in that cost. And we also included um making sure that there was parity across fire, police, sheriff, um, and that the findings were relevant to what the current structure is now.
Thank you. I think that answered my question. And then just on the topic of PTO, I want to make sure I'm reading that graph correctly. You're talking about like fifty days off?
Yes, I think that includes holidays too, and we didn't.
And holidays? But but and and this is something I'm maybe as someone who doesn't work in the public sector, I'm trying to wrap my mind around. Because we have a lot, I mean, I know that there are areas where public sector work is competitive, private sector work, and there are other places where it's not, and each has their own benefits. But I don't know anyone who gets fifty days off a year paid in the private sector. Period. And I, is that, so this graph does not include any private sector comparison. You're talking about inside Virginia, Virginia peer employers and the city of Virginia Beach, but.
Patrick, do you want to take that?
Know what type of PTO provided in general?
Sure. So 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 just so we contextualize that fifty days, so that's a, that's a combination of three data points. Twenty four vacation days plus the twelve sick days plus the fourteen holidays. That's, that's how we got.
It does include holidays.
It does, yep.
And um and um Virginia Beach is the dotted line, right? So they're saying our Virginia peers, so that, so what I, Mr. Blue, when I was trying to articulate it, what I was trying to say is it's a. I mean, I thought I had a generous PTO package in where I currently am. There's nothing compared to that.
And I think, Mr. Blue, I was trying to articulate.
I do have a generous one.
Yeah, it's the grass is green on the other side, right? It's like they're looking at what they could get at Chesapeake, what they could get in Norfolk, what they could get if they were a state employee. Is that if they left Virginia Beach local government to go work for schools, for example, or go work for Chesapeake or go work for the Commonwealth, that's what they would get closer to that red line. Right? So it's not necessarily them looking at the private sector saying if we were to leave the employee of Virginia Beach to go work for another local government, they'll get more leave time than they would work here. So it's, I, it's not necessarily saying that it's that it's a discrepancy, but it's just, it's what they see.
I'm just thinking about the taxpayer who's paying that. Incurring those costs that are so far high and above what the private sector would ever contemplate. And the taxpayers are shouldering that responsibility. And I'm not saying that the city employees aren't great employees and professionals and do a great job, it's it's a lot of PTO.
No, I agree.
The costs of which are incurred by taxpayers.
Yep, that's fair.
Okay, Worth and then Hutch.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Does the Hampton Roads Planning District uh get into this area? And if not, could, is this something, because this is common throughout all the localities, this information that's needed?
What do you mean if the planning district gets into this area?
Do they, do they study it? Do they keep records for all localities? And if not, can we, can we ask them to do that?
I don't, I don't, I don't think so. Yeah, ask, we can ask them, but the planning district tends to focus. We can ask them, but the planning district tends to focus on land use related items, you know? This, this information is, and I think we, we probably can get it from other municipalities. So if it's something that we can give council a report on what other municipalities do in the region from a PTO and SIC standpoint, because it's a public record, you know, so we can get that for council.
Hutch?
So I think for a little bit of clarity, because I can tell you, after thirty-five years, I never had anywhere that much leave. So I don't think that's, I think we got to make sure we do compare apples to apples here. So you were saying tier two.
This is, this is indicative of tier two?
This is the hybrid employee.
Okay, so, and then my, so my, sorry, my second part of this is, how many employees do, because I know it's going to eventually go more towards tier two, but where are we? Tier one to tier two? Like, is it half the number of employees where, because it kind of makes a difference as to what we're talking about here?
The number of employees.
Yeah, I'm not saying you have to have it now. I'm just saying if you're going to put us a little something else together, that would be part of what I think we should see. And then number two is, I don't think we should include holidays because it gives a misnomer of, I mean, everybody in pretty much every job gets the holidays. I don't think we get anything more, you know? So why, why add it on, I guess, is what I'm asking, unless you think there's a relevance that I don't see. So anyway, just my two cents.
I think Siegel was just trying to give a total account for the paid time off.
It just kind of throws you as that you think it's fifty and it's not.
Okay.
That we're giving.
Okay, we got our challenges ahead. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Need to be the holidays from here?
So what, it's twenty-four.
It's combined. No, no, no. Paid time, sick end. People go shoot at you. Most of the time, anyway, well, maybe where you live, yeah, I don't know, yard.
Okay, folks, you know, we can go ahead and get going.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council, Mr. City Manager. My name's CJ Bodnar. I'm the Technical Services Program Manager in the Stormwater Engineering Center. We're here for a briefing from the Army Corps of Engineers on the coastal storm risk management study that we are the non-federal partner for. With me from Public Works is our Director LJ Hanson, the City Engineer Tony Utterback, and our Project Manager Amanda Madsen. Pleasure to introduce to you Michelle Hamer, who is the Chief of the Policy and Planning Division at the Norfolk District, and Heather Lockwood, who is the Project Manager for the Corps for our study.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So it's great to be here. So as CJ mentioned, I'm Heather Lockwood. I recently took this project over in November from Kristin Mezer. So for those of you who got a briefing last October, I've now filled in her shoes for this project. So thank you again for, for having me. So I'm going to give a brief update, just for those of you newly elected, to just bring you up to speed as to what our study is, where we are currently, and then kind of our next steps moving forward. So our coastal storm risk management project, we are in the study phase, and the study purpose is of course to protect, find ways to reduce risk and protect the city from coastal, coastal storms. And so we have a large study area within the whole city bounds, and we're looking at ways again to, to protect infrastructure as well as homes, life safety, things like that, that we want to, you know, so to implement our, our path forward and our plan. What we are looking at are kind of, is a hybrid. So there's really no one size fits all to go across the city. So we're looking at three different types of measures. We're looking at structural measures, which are your storm surge barriers, your levees, your flood walls. And then we're looking at non-structural, which are ways to protect critical infrastructure, elevating residences and buildings, and then nature-based solutions. So what can we look at that the environment can help us with? Can we construct dunes? Can we create more wetlands and marshes to kind of protect the shoreline, living shorelines? And so it's going to be a hybrid throughout the city that we're kind of looking at, and then trying to develop again our path forward. So where we are, so the civil works process for the Army Corps has multiple different phases. So you can see those top five are kind of outline those. So we already completed our study initiation phase, and then now we are in the feasibility phase, which is our, our planning and study. And then we'll move into our PED phase, which is our pre-construction engineering and design, and then construction, and then we'll obviously get into our operations and maintenance. So if we dive deeper into feasibility phase, there's four different kind of areas, which is the next kind of flow chart. And so I'll kind of zoom into that one and where we are. So we have already completed our scoping phase, which is where we really got involved with figuring out, okay, where are the, what are the problems, working with the city, trying to at least outline, you know, where we are, talking with environmental agencies, and then starting to get a draft plan of like, starting point of where we can go. So we developed our alternatives, which was any of the little green diamonds on there are milestones. And so we've completed the alternatives milestone, which kind of laid out some of the, the path, paths forward. Where we are right now is just shortly thereafter that where we're starting to refine those alternatives. And we're doing a lot of public engagement again. So last week, we had a series of four public meetings throughout the city, which I'll touch on in a moment. And we're all, we're kind of going towards our next milestone, which is our tentatively selected plan, or how we kind of say it is, of course, an acronym of TSP. And that is really where we have continued to fine tune what we are proposing for this project. And we will continue refining until we get to our final report in a few years. So again, we're, we're really still in the very beginning stages, which is why input from the public and our agency stakeholders is really, really important and vital. And I'll kind of touch on some of the things that we've done most recently. The entire study duration is five years and eleven months, so just shy of six years. And cost-wise, we're looking at thirteen and a half million. So this is all things that was briefed back in October. And we had not received our, like, our, our form of approval, which is the vertical team alignment memo, and we did get that in December. So we got the green light to continue moving forward with this extended study period and, and cost. It is a fifty-fifty cost share between us and the city to complete this study, phased over years. So you'll see, we're not asking for all of that money upfront. The same will happen during construction. So it's not, whenever we come out with our, our plans and we have our construction, it's going to be phased, similar to how like the city of Norfolk is doing now. So again, not, not asking for a large sum, sum of money right from the start. So I mentioned, we've, it's fifty-fifty cost share, except for one level of review that is a hundred percent federally funded, which is about two hundred thousand. So that's why you'll see kind of the totals aren't exactly fifty-fifty, because we do pay a little bit extra. And to date, we've spent approximately two point five million. So now I'm going to give a, a quick kind of overview of the different measures and locations that we have proposed. Again, this is the same that you saw back in October. These are some of the public meeting slides that we used last week. And so this is also what the public saw. So most of all of our measures, measure one is adapted from the sea level wise, the city plan from 2020. So this is specific to our Lynn Haven inlet. So measure one includes a surge barrier as well as dunes and a flood wall. And then we go to measure two, which is just flood wall and gates throughout the city, so not a, not the surge barrier right at the inlet, the mouth of the inlet. And then measure number three is a surge barrier and a flood wall, so just no dunes there. The next one is Back Bay, and so there are two measures for that. Number one, again, aligns with our, the sea level wise adaptation strategy, which is flood walls and elevating Sand Bridge Road. Number two is also elevating Sand Bridge Roads and some gates, so just not a structural measure, not a barrier included in that one. Elizabeth River, Eastern Branch, again, the, the first location for the barrier is in align with the sea level wise, as well as then, option two and three are also barriers. The second one is along South Military Highway, and then the third is along sixty-four. So those are all three structural solutions that we have established so far. Now for Little Creek, the same thing, we have three, three measures. The first one aligning with sea level wise, which is a barrier, flood wall, and dune along that location. The second one is a beach and a dune, so just not a structural barrier at the mouth of Little Creek. And then number three is a flood wall, just a flood wall along North Hampton. Southern Rivers, the first one is an elevated roadway, a levee, and a gate, again, along with the sea level wise strategy. And number two is the same elevated roadway, levee, and gate, but the gate would be, would have a closure along North Landing River. And then moving into West Neck Creek Bridge. So that one is just a, consists of an elevated roadway and a gate west of the neck, and a gate at West Neck Creek Bridge. And then finally, our oceanfront and Rudy inlet measures. So number, the first one is again, sea level wise strategy, which is just a barrier at Rudy inlet and then tying into dunes. And then the second one includes the, the barrier, dunes, and a flood wall. So now talking kind of, now moving into, since the last time that you guys were briefed in October, what have we done since then? I mentioned already the vertical team alignment memo, allowing us to have a thirteen point five million dollar study in almost six years. We also completed our future without project modeling. We had a targeted agency technical review to really hone in on those and get comments ahead of our tentatively selected plan. And so the team is now working on modifying those. And there were different models that were evaluated, that were running, so that G2CRM is a model that kind of measured, that evaluates structure damage along the coastal, along the coastal surge, so not, except the beach. So kind of looking at the entire city, again, except the beach fronts. Whereas for Beach FX, that's where we're looking at inundation from the beach and structure damage as the water moves along the shoreline. And then also, we looked at LifeSim, which is like life safety and loss, evaluating that. And then PECRAZ is another engineering model that just looks at water surface profiles. And so we're taking a lot of information and trying to make this as comprehensive as we can to make the best informed decisions moving forward. Another thing that we're doing is the ERDC, or ERTIC as we call it, is our Engineering, Research and Development Center. They are looking at hydrodynamic modeling for us, and so they are trying to help us gather information about, you know, if we do a structural measure like a barrier, what does that mean for behind the barrier? What does it mean for in front? Water quality, as well as where the water is going to move if it hits a barrier. And so we, there are eight tasks that they are helping us out with, and so we have completed the first two, and they're on to the third. We've done a lot of coordination since October. That's that kind of next bulleted list. We had our first barrier workshop with iStorm. There are a series of experts on barrier design, so, and outside of just the US. So that's really helpful to look at projects that are happening in Europe and other locations to take lessons learned, as well as get ideas for what kind of, what our barriers could look like and what's actually feasible in the area. And then, of course, our, we had virtual public meetings in December, which then helped us kind of move into the, the public meetings we had last week. We did choose four locations with the help of CJ and Amanda to try and make them as close as some of these proposed measures and, and locations that we could, so that way those communities could come and talk specifically to the proposals that we have for the project moving forward. So we had a relatively good turnout, and we're looking to continue those efforts, to continue engage with the public. We have a lot of upcoming opportunities as well to continue with, with public input. We had also our, a lot of integration with the Navy and the pilots, trying to figure out as well, like especially at Lynn Haven, since the Pilot Association is right there, you know, what, what constraints do they have if we're proposing some of these measures? And then of starting to talk non-structural and our nature-based solutions. So next steps, this is my final slide, and so what are we going to do in the next little bit? Again, I mentioned continued public outreach. We're going to look at targeting some innovative ways to reach more people. At the meetings last week, I got asked to present to a few civic leagues, so looking to kind of help with that and target some of those communities to really, when they're there, already have an existing meeting, being able to take some time and, and talk through this. Because the biggest thing that we need to do is get, get this project out there in front of people now, because this is really the best time to take public input, rather than we get, when we get to design and construction, which is a lot of times what happens when people have comments. They come, you know, at that point. So trying to continue that, you know, public outreach, we will be, we're now actively looking at the Future With Project and doing a compound study, a compound flood sensitivity analysis, as well as looking again, incorporating nature-based solutions, non-structural, critical infrastructure. Ertic will continue their modeling. One of the big things that we're doing too is going to award a task order, a contract to an AE firm to do some geotechnical investigations and some soil boring, so working on that scope as well to award in the fall, and then further refine. Right now, we're at like about a five percent, not even five percent level of design for some of those structural measures, so continuing moving forward so we can get costs in front of you as well. And so the, the final goal, you know, is before we have that tentatively selected plan, and then sixty days after, we will release a draft report to the public, we want to get in front of you all again, because we want you to see that first before the public. I want to make sure that city buy-in and city approves what we're going to say is our, our, to set tentatively selected plan moving forward to the public. So we will look to schedule that again as we continue and further refine the schedule.
We are certainly moving in the right direction very well, I think. Barbara?
The study itself is costly. Looking at all of these measures that we are going to be recommending, raising a lot of roads, flood walls, and all of that's going to cost a whole lot of money. Who's paying for that?
I think that's so, Ms. Henley, that's, that's a combination of city and the federal government, right?
Are you sure about what's happening, I guess, what you just said?
What was that?
The federal government.
I mean, who knows what the future says, Ms. Henley? And you're absolutely right, but currently how the contract is, and the legislation with the Congress is set up is the city is responsible thirty-five percent, and the federal government is responsible for sixty-five percent.
I think we need to have some conversation with our congressional delegation about these things. It's, you know, I really hate to see us continue forward until we, I know, I know nobody knows from one day to the next now what's going on. But this is going to be extremely costly, and I think we need to make sure that our congressional delegation is going to be supportive. I hate for us to go through all of this with the, all of the public and telling the public we're going to do these things or not, just on the basis of, well, we think it's going to be there when we want it, because this is, this is not just millions, I bet it's billions.
Ms. Henley, it's billions. And it's also, there is, there is legislation, and again, things are subject to change, right? There is legislation authorizing this on the federal side and on the city side that was adopted by council. So Congress adopted legislation, city council adopted legislation. Then also, the city and the Army Corps of Engineers pursuant to that legislation signed a contract that said the basic groundwork of how this is supposed to work, and that's codified in law. So yes, things could change, Ms. Henley, but there is a lot of, lot of legal support behind this, you know? And I caveat it, Ms. Henley, because, you know, we've seen a lot of historic things happen these past couple of weeks that I don't think a lot of us thought we would see before, you know? But as far as a Senate of. But as far as a sense of, a sense of certainty, this is as close as you get it, but I wouldn't say it's certain, you know? I would say it's a lot of money, but also it's not gonna be done all in one phase, right? This is gonna be done in multiple phases, probably over a 10, 15, 20-year time horizon, if not longer than that, right? Norfolk, I think theirs is a couple billion dollars and they're trying to find between the Army Corps and the city of Norfolk, like 500, 300 million dollars for the first phase, right? So they're trying to bite off 35% of that first phase. And that's why this, we asked the city council to allow us to support Norfolk getting their effort supported by the General Assembly. Because as we talked about before, there's a lot of military stuff congregated in Virginia Beach. That's one of the reasons why the federal, why the federal government supported doing this coastal resiliency project. But also since the Commonwealth is all in on military, they need to help the local governments here in Hampton Roads, help to ensure that we can get the resiliency needed to keep these assets here as well. So I wouldn't say it's certain, but it's, it's pretty codified pretty well that the federal government support it will be there based on law and based on contract.
Well, our, our Congress seems to be silent these days. And I really think, I mean, I know we're just in the study phase and I just don't want to see something that, I mean, has no support from Congress, because if they don't speak up, there's not gonna be anything. It's time for them to say something.
I would just share that there is directed spending that has been provided by certainly the representatives. So I believe, the old word, of course, was earmarks. It's not that way it is now, it's directed spending by Congress. And I think there was certain amounts that have been identified in the budget. And so I only say that to share with you that they are definitely tracking, but certainly, you know, welcome reaching out to them.
Things are definitely tentative. There we go.
And it's based on, yes, availability of federal funding as you're recognizing.
I want to thank you for putting together a wonderful presentation.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay. It is gonna be expensive and I'm hoping that we do have the federal government. We do have their help. I would love, on the educational point, I would love to see this presentation in District 7 at one of our civic groups, which is Childstown Civic Group. I would love for you to reach out to them or we can make the connection. But this, this is a great presentation and I think we can benefit from it. Okay?
And Ms. Ray, I just want to address that. Councilmember Jackson Green, if that's something that you want, I'll coordinate with LJ and it will work with his staff to give, maybe if you go to another town hall, then you come in town hall to get this as an agenda item as part of that as well, you know?
My point is facing. Mayor, I've been thinking about some of the conversations that have been happening around this table related to the federal government over the last couple of months, and I'm not comfortable with it. And the reason that I'm not comfortable with it is because if we don't want to have national politics entering this space, then don't bring national politics into this space. Because here's the deal, a lot of people feel like federal spending was out of control. I'm one of them. Does that mean that I endorse or subscribe to everything that's coming? Absolutely not. But at the same token, a lot of people, a lot of Virginia Beach citizens recognize and understand and felt like federal spending was out of control and it has contributed to a degradation of our quality of life and put our national security, national finances and other things at risk. So we shouldn't sit here and characterize the efforts that are underway to rein in and have responsible federal spending in government as things that have all these negative effects on our deal. Let's be, let's have a conversation about what we're gonna have a conversation about. But to, but for me to sit here, week after week after week and, and hear the insertion of national politics into this space is, makes me not very comfortable. And I think we need to focus on the things that we are working on.
Stacy?
Thank you so much for this presentation. And you had a number of public meetings and I'm the first to admit that maybe I missed it. But could we be made aware in advance of these public meetings so that we could have the opportunity to attend?
We'll make sure, we'll resend the information we sent out to council to get y'all aware of the dates and the times.
Okay, anybody else certain? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Just, I'm gonna step out for a moment, but I'm gonna support Ms. Henley in bringing up the federal government, because so much of our funding is reliant on it and it is so off the rails. So when you've got non-elected people taking information and shutting down entire departments and civil servants and staff can't access information and do their jobs, and the federal workforce doesn't know if they're gonna have a job and they administer these programs, we need to prepare for that. So there's no way we cannot have those conversations. It's not even partisan. It's the federal government as we have known it does not, there's an attempt to completely transform it. We then, so if the federal funding is cut off and we already, at the local level, our general fund can only absorb so much. So then we look to the state, they're having to prepare for it, we have to prepare for it too. I think it would be a complete disservice to our citizens if we, if we don't anticipate that we need to prepare and we need to have these conversations. So I appreciate that you bring those up, because it's important.
And with regard to Councilmember Rouse's comments, I'm not sitting here saying we shouldn't prepare for a change in policy. It's the manner in which these policies are represented at this table makes me and many other people watching through our city uncomfortable. And everyone has a right to their opinion. But when you talk about having non-elected people impacting the operations of the government, the same thing occurred during the COVID crisis and no one had any issue with that. So this, I don't think we need to have a national debate here. Councilmember Rouse or Councilmember Henley or anyone else. We need to have a conversation about the operations of our municipal government and to the extent those things relate to the federal government and federal planning, federal funding, that's fine. But the, but the, but the types of insertion of partisan political politics that have been happening in this room is, is not collegial. It is, does not lead to the type of relationships that we're trying to build here. I think it sends a weird message to the public and to the professional staff who are trying to support our work.
Okay, if we might, maybe we can continue this conversation or council comments and we can wrap up, okay? But we, we will have the conversation.
Somebody's gotta say it.
Okay?
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the next presentation will be update on the, on the Festival Task Force, right? Several members of council asked that we bring this item back to the city council to get council sense of a direction in terms of a path they want us to move forward on.
Welcome, Amanda.
You ready? Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of city council, Manager Duhany and City Attorney Stiles. Nancy Hellman and I are here today to provide a review and recommendations for implementation of outcomes from the 90-day Festival Task Force that was presented to you originally on May 28th and then again on July 9th of 2024. Today, we will have a narrow focus and specifically address the oceanfront parks policy, outdoor events and entertainment permit guidebook and permit administrative fee structure. So as you listen to today's presentation, we'll be seeking your guidance and direction and empowering staff to update and modify the current oceanfront parks policy, which was last updated in 2005, as well as modernizing the permit application fees, which have not been increased in more than 20 years. We're seeking your willingness to incorporate the guiding principles recommended by the 90-day Task Force into the outdoor events and entertainment permit guidebook, which staff is currently in the process of updating for ADA compliance. As a reminder, the 16-member council-appointed committee came together in 2024 to discuss the current oceanfront parks policy and to discuss funding criteria. Citizens, as well as representatives from the Hotel Association, the Restaurant Association, the Atlantic Avenue Association, Central Business District, Resort Advisory Commission, Minority Business Council and Arts and Humanities Commission all served on this committee. And I'd like to acknowledge and recognize members of that task force that are in attendance today. Hours of work went into debate and discussion during this process. And council, as a reminder, did receive the initial overview of their work on May 28th, which outlined the guiding principles that the task force recommended to be incorporated into future policymaking. Again, on July 9th, staff followed up with that presentation to provide an overview of council for ways that we could operationalize those recommendations, which leads us here today, and I'll turn it over to Nancy Hellman at this point, which will discuss a very narrowly focused overview of their recommendations.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, council. So based on the task force feedback, I'm a second, let me advance this slide. Okay. Based on the fact, the task force feedback, we're recommending updating the oceanfront parks policy to address the use of all public spaces at the oceanfront for events. The oceanfront parks policy would now be known as the oceanfront events policy. Staff will consult this policy when making strategic business decisions and booking decisions. Proposed oceanfronts, oceanfront events policy would address booking priority. First priority is given to the city's general entertainment and major events. Major events include events and activations supported by city council. Examples include activities executed by beach events, the city's entertainment contractor, as well as large music festivals and council actions like the city's Juneteenth and Virginia Beach Pride Celebration. Second priority is given to programs or events promoted by a third party or organization where the organization has a 501(c)(3) nonprofit tax exempt status. Example of those types of events are the North American Sand Soccer Championship, Neptune Festival, Boardwalk Art Show and USO Warrior Weekend. Third priority is given to private events, which involve closing the oceanfront park or the sandy beach to the public for events that are associated for, with a convention or a sports tourism or tourism group. Fourth priority is given to ticketed events, not associated with a convention or tourism group. These events are hosted by private organizations or businesses, charitable fundraisers or events where there is a cost to the public interested in attending the events. And then fifth priority includes small events or functions such as weddings and family reunions. These events will be deemed as non-exclusive and cannot close the public space to the public. The oceanfront events policy will also address the overproliferation of food vendors at all three oceanfront parks. It is recommended to update the language in the policy to reflect that the ratio of food vendors per projected attendee in an oceanfront park, including 17th Street Park, 24th Street Park and 31st Street Park, should not exceed one food vendor per 500 attendees. This will encourage participants in oceanfront parks and events to visit our local businesses and create additional economic impact. Also, based on task force input, we're recommending an increase to the permit application and processing fee for a one-day event and a two-day event with, for their outdoor event permit. Permit fees have not been increased in more than 20 years and are behind the rates of our competitive set. Currently, a one-day permit administrative fee is $75. It is recommended to increase that to $150. And currently, a two-day permit fee is $250 and it is recommended to increase that to $500. City Code 4-1 dictates that an application fee is charged to offset administrative, administrative processing time by staff. 11 departments review an application prior to issuing a special events permit. Additionally, we're recommending updating the outdoor events and entertainment permit guidebook to include themes from the guiding principles developed by the 90-day Task Force. This guidebook is given to prospective event producers to assist in planning and hosting events in Virginia Beach. It outlines compliance and accountability, expectations for delivery, public safety requirements, ADA compliance requirements, traffic control, community mitigation, conversations, vendor and sponsor requirements, waste management and many other things. Those are the main things, themes that we're planning to cover in updating the outdoor events and entertainment permit guidebook. And I will pass the mic back to Amanda to close it out.
So as we stated in the beginning, the recommendations that you're receiving today were recommendations from the task force. They are endorsed by city staff. They allow us to modernize and update the oceanfront events policy, like as we mentioned, has not been updated in over 20 years. It allows us to slightly increase our fee structure. As those of you who have been on council recall, the initial presentation that you received from the task force was quite robust. It had seven very broad overarching guiding principles. This is a very narrow piece of a portion of what they recommended, but we do feel like this is a way to operationalize what the task force that was appointed by council recommended and what staff supports. And so unless we receive a different direction from city council, we plan to proceed with updating this document and increasing the fee structure. And we're happy to take any questions that you may have.
Rosemary?
Glad you're bringing this forward. 20 years is a long time. I guess, what I don't understand, though, if you could explain it, you must have your thought processes for this. So one day is 150, two days is 500. That seems odd to me.
It's a, it's a multi-day permit, which requires additional overnight activity and activation, which requires deeper look into from our staff. But if it, if it's not a number that, you know, we'll certainly take council direction on, on looking into that.
So what is it?
It just seems, 150 seems low.
Yeah, I think the clarification that the vice mayor is asking is that she heard in some, she heard today that it's 150, but I think she heard in another situation that we want, we wanted to move the permit to 500. So she wants clarity on which one is it? Are we moving from 75 to 150?
Two days is 500 and one day is 150. It just seems to be a big difference between, between the two. You'd almost think one would be 250 and the other would be 500. But you must have your reasons for, for recommending that, but I'm, I'd like to have a better understanding of it.
So, okay. Yeah, so the, the permit application fee is, they were designed to be a, two different, two different numbers. The one was 75 for a one-day fee and the two-day fee was 150, I mean, sorry, 250. So over time, when we looked at the past 20 years and did a 3% escalator and tried to do some of the math in the background to come up with a, a number that we thought would be appropriate as we move forward to modernize the fee, that's where we came up with the, the two different numbers. So I want to make sure.
So it certainly is not indicative of the amount of staff time that it takes to review these applications. The fee could be exponentially higher. The staff was trying to remain sensitive to our community groups and not increase the fee to such a large degree that it became cost prohibitive from some of your nonprofits. And so we're trying to take that into account.
So I think Amanda or Nancy clarify, so currently, right now, the fee is 75 for one day?
Correct.
And then for two days, 250?
Correct. And so the proposal to have a slow but steady increase to more accurately reflect the amount of time that it takes for staff to review these applications is to increase from 75 to 150 and from 250 to 500. Again, this does not truly offset the administrative costs that it takes to review these applications, but there was a sensitivity to not increase the fee to such a large degree that it becomes cost prohibitive for your smaller agencies and organizations.
Do you have a general sense what your benchmark pairs are doing, like Ocean City and the other cities are doing?
Yes, we do. We have that information and I can share that in an upcoming Friday package if council is interested.
Okay.
Sticking with this, as being a small business owner, and kind of going along with what the vice mayor was saying, and again, I would trust what y'all say. I'm just stating upfront is like that, that's a lot of whatever widgets I'm selling. If we're going from 75 to 150, it's like, ooh, okay, I gotta, there's a couple hours of my work that's going just to pay for the fee. I don't know, you might say, and the, and the folks back here might say, no, they, they knocked that out of the park. That's a very teeny number. The other thing, though, is, is then it just almost feels like for the two-day that we've, we just said, oh, well, we're gonna double this one, so we're gonna double that one. Again, if I'm the one purchasing this and we're the ones, well, two of you specifically are gonna hear about it a lot more, is, is that, holy micro, you went from 250 to 500, you know? And if it's, if it is on the backs of some of our smaller ones, it just feels like maybe we should tier it a little bit over a couple of years instead of, bam, you know? Again, I would trust what y'all are coming up with. I'm just telling you from a small business perspective.
So just as an additional, like, point of clarification, the existing, like, one-day fee has been that way for 20 years. And so raising the fee based on inflation and what others in our market are doing, it would actually put the fee just at under 100. others in our market are doing, it would actually put the fee just at under $140. It's $135.46, to be exact. And the comparable markets that we benchmark against are in the range of $150 to $250. So we felt like going at the lower end of our competitive set would make sense, especially because we know that this may, in some cases, be received as a shock.
Cash?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you for putting together this study. I think Virginia Beach needs to be competitive, right? And I think that they are offering us to be competitive and so that we can be the market leaders that we are. So I'm in agreement with that. So, thank you.
Rosemary, and then Worth.
So, continuing this conversation, are there any other costs other than the permit for using our facilities, our property, all of that?
Yes, ma'am.
The other?
So there's, there is not a rental fee on top of that. It's an application and permit fee, which is part of our city code. So no, there is not an additional rental fee associated.
However, there is additional staff time. Right. So to, yes. So there is additional staff time across all departments. As Nancy referenced in her portion of the presentation, there are 11 departments alone that review the application permit. So then-
It seems to me, and I don't want to hurt any small, but they're getting our parks and our stages and all of that. I mean, $150 a whole day to utilize, that seems pretty low to me. That's just, other people may feel differently, but I mean, there's, there's no real.
Vice mayor, could you say your point? They're getting to rent, in some cases, the beach, the footprint of the beach, in some cases, the stage and all those other amenities that are down there that we allow events to use the city resources.
You know, like 24, those bathrooms, so that'll be cleaned. I mean, there's all kinds of things. So, I don't know, maybe other people feel, it just seems kind of low considering what you get for that money.
And then considering the fact, too, that-
It costs us more.
Yep. And then considering the fact that coming out of COVID, when we were trying to program the beach, council adopted a policy that we started to absorb some of the costs associated with public utilities, public works, and police as part of this as well, you know? So this is some of the things that's going as part of this.
And I think part of what we were talking about is on user fees, it should cover the cost, what it's cost. It shouldn't go on the backs of the taxpayers, you know, from the real estate tax. So if it costs $100, then we should charge 100, you know? So just, it's a user fee. It's a voluntary amount. So it seems low to me for what they're getting in return, and the staff time and what it's actually costing us.
Okay. Worth, Josh, and Stacy?
Two questions, just a follow-up on this. This is an application fee. It's not to cover what they're asking for. Correct?
This is the application.
This is the permit application fee.
Correct.
So if they want to rent a stage or a beach or whatever, then someone has to evaluate that, and that's kind of my second question. But it's just an application fee. It's not the total.
Yes. This is, this is the administrative work that staff can do, and that is associated with the application fee that it takes in staff time to review the application. If council would like to look at additional costs and charges associated with rentals, that's certainly something that we can take up in the future based on your direction. And then event owners do have significant costs that it takes for them to individually put on events based on the size and scope of the event that they're putting on. Everything from fencing and, and trash cans and officials and all the other things that it takes to put their events on. So we do try to keep the application fee affordable.
Thanks. Thanks for clarifying that. And just as a follow-up to that, thanks for the presentation, by the way, and your use of the word narrow a couple of times, because this task force did a lot of work, a lot of people, a lot of experience and know-how, spent a lot of time, valuable time, put a lot of great information together and recommendations. And I'm glad you did the narrow at this point, because I, I don't think this does not require council vote. It's a direction to staff to change policy. Is that correct?
This will be something that'll probably come up as part of the budget process, right? So it's like, it tends to be like fees, like parks and rec fees and things like that. Those things get updated as part of the budget process. Council could not accept it or accept it.
So just a, just a point of clarification, because one of the tasks, of the task force was to take up the question of evaluating proposals, and you did not take that up today. I'm glad you didn't, because I think what you just said is all proposals will eventually come to us, council, for a decision.
Okay. Josh, Stacy, and Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Nancy, and Amanda. Thank you very much for the presentation. I just wanted to chime in with my support, with my support for moving forward. And, and you know, just, it occurs to me that 150, you could spend, you can't even rent a hotel room for $150. There's, let alone a hotel room for two days, you know, you'd be lucky to get out, you know, for, for $500. So to be able to offer an amenity like a, an entire park or a section of beach or some other venue to hold an event for less than what it would take to stay here overnight in a single room, I think is-
Hey, Stacy and Amelia.
Thank you. I had a question about the food truck location. One food truck for 510 attendees. How's that calculated? Because if you have three attendees, are they entitled to a food truck versus if you have 900 attendees, are they entitled to one food truck?
So it would be calculated as part of the review process when the applications come in. Each park has a maximum capacity. So that's where the, the task force was very interested in ensuring that we didn't have an overproliferation of food vendors where we have lots of private businesses right outside of the steps of the parks, so we can ensure that our private businesses, as well as our events, are both serviced. We also found that many events were sort of taking advantage of that opportunity and selling many more food vendors and sponsors than could actually fit into a park, and they would spill out onto the boardwalk and down the rails. So this was our attempt at putting some guardrails up and providing direction to event owners on the best way to maximize the space in the park, but also balance the needs of the community.
Hey, Amelia.
I want to thank both of you for what you presented. And I think it's fair, the amount, when I look at the 20 years. Also, I know we've had situations where we've had so many food trucks and limiting where they pour their oils out, et cetera. So all of those have to be, you know, looked at. And also for the hoteliers, and there has to be a balance. And I think, you know, that's what you're doing. Of course, they're not even touching other permits, like you mentioned. The example where we have the genus symphonic that's going to come over onto our land for the stage is $500, just the mobile stage. So you see there are a lot more costs. This is just the general narrow, and I thank all those who worked on that committee for the work of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at this point?
Yeah, remember when I first moved to Virginia Beach, I rented a dumpster, a big one, you know, because I had a lot of stuff to put in there, and it was 25 bucks. And then all of a sudden, they did an assessment, found that, that every time, they, the city was losing money. So, you know, once again, I think we just got to adapt to the times. And, you know, it, it takes, it costs a lot of money to run a city, and it takes a tremendous amount of money when they put on a big concert at the oceanfront, when you talk about police, but you've got to also talk about public works and, you know, so many other people. And we want to do it right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, folks. Okay, folks. Worth.
Okay, go ahead and get the orange.
Uh-oh. Broke it?
All right. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, you're going to hear from Chief Nutigate. He's going to update city council on 2024 crime stats and answer any questions you all may have about Police Department.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for an opportunity to come in today and talk about what was absolutely a really good year for the Virginia Beach Police Department and the city of Virginia Beach. So with me today, I have Deputy Chiefs Adams, Wilkerson, Zelms, Lieutenant Strauss, my Chief Communications Officer, Jody Saunders, and Mr. Brandon Kyle, who oversees our newly formed Real-Time Crime Center and our Analytical Services Unit. And under the direction of Shelby Santos and her team, who are probably watching, they put this presentation together, and I think you'll be very pleased with the results. So usually, we start out with crime, but I thought I would shake it up a little bit today and talk about traffic. And I know that this is a topic of many of our council members. We hear from you, we hear from the community about traffic enforcement and especially speeding and reckless driving. So as you can see, from looking at speeding-related citations last year, we issued 11,733, slightly down from the previous year, but definitely up over 20, almost 2,200 violations from 2022, when we put some additional emphasis on traffic enforcement at the request of council and our communities. And as a result, when we look at that for two years in a row, we are looking at a reduction in overall total crashes. So for 2024, we have almost a 4% reduction in total crashes from the previous year and also down from 2022. And as a result, I think with some additional attention on those reckless driving and those speeding violations, we had a 31% decrease in fatal traffic crashes last year. And we're going to look at a regional comparison. And, you know, we always look at our sister cities and Hampton Roads, and I would offer that a much more apples-to-apples comparison, our large cities, our size, but we did go ahead and include it. So when you look at Hampton Roads and you look at our sister cities, of course, we led with 22 fatalities. But when we factor in how big our city is compared to our sister cities, that puts us at the bottom with 4.8 fatalities per 100,000 residents. And Mayor, members of council, what I would off, offer is, this is just based on our residential population. This does not factor in our 14 million visitors a year. So it's hard to factor in, you know, what our visitor numbers are to our other cities. So we stick with a baseline of the residential population. But I think if we factored in the millions of visitors that come to our wonderful city each year, this number is much, much lower. So that national comparison that I was speaking of, when we tend to look at our sister cities, our size, we have Miami, Omaha, Atlanta, Colorado Springs, Raleigh, Long Beach, Mesa, and Virginia Beach. And we are definitely at the bottom when we look at that with 22. And it puts us in perspective with 4.8 fatalities per 100,000 residents. We are definitely at the, the bottom of the scale when we look at other cities, between that 450 and 550,000 residential population. So I know this came up. There were some questions about CIT and where we are with our crisis response. So I thought this was a great opportunity to provide some education to the community and remind everyone what our CIT program is. So it's based off a model that was established in Memphis in 1988. It's been in use at VBPD since 2008, and it is a additional 40 hours of training that we give to our officers with a specific instruction on recognizing mental health crises, the resources and the treatments available, and when that crisis has escalated to the point that we need to take them into custody for a state mental hold. One of the things we get asked is how many of our officers are trained in CIT? So approximately 65% of our sworn workforce have received this additional training, and something that Deputy Chief Zelms implemented last year as we recognized the need. Historically, we've left it up for those that were interested, and it was a voluntary additional training. We started mandating that training for all new recruit classes last year. So with the goal that eventually, at some point, 100% of your VBPD officers will have this additional 40-hour training class. So when 911 receives a call and it involves a mental health issue, we will always dispatch a CIT officer if they're available. They will respond and, of course, coordinate with our Department of Human Services for an appropriate response. Also, should be noted that in 2018, VBPD and DHS worked together to form mobile co-responder teams, which is a clinician from DHS and a CIT-trained officer from VBPD that will go out and try to triage and mitigate these health-related calls. So last year, your police department responded to 228,000 911 calls. When you see those calls for service, those are strictly citizen-generated. They do not include traffic stops, hotspot patrols, any proactive work that the officers would engage in. Of those 228,000 calls, only 3,400 of them were mental health-related, 1.5%. But when you tally up the number of hours that we commit to these type of calls with multiple hours, multiple officers, multiple days, it accounts for over 10% of our dedicated time. So 1.5% actually takes a large chunk out of our ability to operate. And, you know, we, we do have some concerns about the current existing process. And one that Deputy Chief Adams just brought to my attention from this weekend is York County SO. And Chief, I'm council member, I know you, you know how these go, that they had a Virginia Beach resident in York County with a TDO. And code currently in Virginia mandates that they're, if they are within 50 miles of their home jurisdiction, we're responsible for their custody and transport. So on Friday night at 11:00, we responded out to York County, took custody of this individual that had a TDO, and we were unable to find any hospitals that had an available bed or would take custody of him. So that meant from Friday night until he received a committal hearing Monday morning, we basically had to babysit this individual around the clock, and that involved 19 officers in various shifts all through the weekend that were not in Virginia Beach, but were up in York County. And one of the big concerns that we have about not having, having a crisis-receiving center or a warm handoff location for us is, our officers are really not trained into taking custody of someone for an extended period like this. I mean, we are talking days that we sent in a room in a hospital because we had no one to take care of them, and no one would take them. So it is very concerning. We heard the sheriff last week, and he mentioned the need for a crisis-receiving center, and I support that wholeheartedly. All right. If we're ready, talk about crime. We know part of crime consists of two categories, violent and property. We know in Virginia Beach that only a very small part or small fraction of all of our crime is violent, only 5.5%. And when we take a look at it, we'll take a look at them in individual categories. The one area where we are seeing a little bit of an increase last year and also this year is in our commercial burglaries. I think one of our news stations just did a, a story on it. Our vape shops and our smoke shops seem to be a, a very large target. And, you know, we were brainstorming and trying to wonder why that is, and we're not saying that all of them are engaged in a list, that activity or even a large percentage. But this is some of the great work that Second Precinct Crime Suppression just did with one of our local vape shops and a companion one out in Chesapeake last week. Multiple pounds of weed, many products with illegal THC. last week. Multiple pounds of weed, many products with illegal THC. And we didn't go out looking for this, because I know there is a lot of, you know, we were in this murky world of legalization and marijuana and enforcement, but when we have a lot of disorder and other illicit activity associated with those vape shops, they come up on our radar, and we're not going to turn a blind eye. And that's what happened with this one. Residential burglaries, down 4%, but you can see we're at a four-year low. Motor vehicle theft, it's down 27% compared to last year, but 46% compared to where we were in 2022. So if you remember, there was an influx of car thefts. I think really those numbers are reflective of a couple factors. You know, we had the problem with Kias that were easily stolen. I think Kia and some of the other manufacturers have taken some steps to mitigate that. But you know, once again, I know it's a topic of conversation at the General Assembly, but with council support, the implementation of technology, our Real-Time Crime Center, our Flock cameras, our mobile license plate readers, we are identifying stolen cars in hours and minutes with technology and not relying on an officer with a hot sheet looking at a license plate. Like when I was a young officer, and we would put stolen license plates on a sticky and put it on the dashboard. And if you had a really good memory, you would find one, you know, maybe one once a week while you were out patrolling. Now the technology is right there, the camera is always scanning. And I think that really tells our citizens that we are getting these cars back, especially the ones that are just being taken to Joyride, and getting them back to our residents in short order. And there's only a small number of individuals that are going to go out and steal a car. And now we're making those immediate arrests, and they're not out on the street to steal this one, dump it, and go steal the next one. And I think the technology, which I'm eternally grateful to this council for, along with the great work of the men and women of the department, have cut these motor vehicle thefts in half over the last couple of years. All right, let's talk about theft of motor vehicles, down 17% compared to 2023, and once again, almost cut in half from 2022. And you know, we're going to talk about violent crime, we talk about all these other concerns, but this is the one that impacts our residents the most, impacts our visitors the most. We don't want to be known as the community or the city where you're going to routinely come out and someone has broken out your window and stolen your iPad, your laptop, or anything that you left in there. And we put a lot of emphasis in this. So the men and women of this police department have really bought in to our hotspot policing strategy, where we ask them to go to locations that Mr. Kyle's shop identifies through analysis and be highly visible for about 15 minutes. And those, ladies and gentlemen, are the 17,000 hotspot patrols that were conducted by your police officers last year going to those locations. And I see, you know, I think what we really have is a diffusion of benefits. They go to those locations, and we don't have crime there. The one area where we do struggle, all other thefts are up, they continue to go up each year. We've discussed this in previous meetings and presentations. Our top 10 locations, right there, account for 20% of all of those other thefts. You know, Pembroke Mall is not just the mall, that includes all the stores in the area, but some of those locations are individual ones, and they do drive our numbers. And we will work with them, and we try to work with them. But it's really, we're really reliant on how much they want to be proactive and aggressive in addressing this problem. You know, one of the things that we had back in Ohio, that we kind of lack here in the Commonwealth, is the ability to file chronic nuisance legislation against some of these locations when they choose not to comply, and they're responsible for an inordinate amount of calls for service. But we will continue to work with them. But that's one area where we could improve. So when we look at property crime in totality, it was down last year 4.3%, and definitely down from 2022, when there were almost 8,300 offenses. All right, violent crime. Rapes, down 21%. Robberies, consistent with last year, were up by about seven offenses, but down from the preceding years of '22 and '21. Aggravated assaults, 34% reduction from last year. Take a look at our shootings. Definitely a topic of conversation, especially when we had less than a favorable year in 2023. We have a 50% reduction in total shooting incidents, lowest in four years. Shooting victims, reduced from 88 to 39, a 56% decrease in the number of individuals shot in Virginia Beach last year. And this is just the rolling timeline, you know, red is where we were last year, blue is the preceding year of 2023, and the middle is your median, and the dark gray are your standard deviations. So you can see that what occurred last year, really, it was a lot of great work, coupled with technology, that has really gotten those numbers, that we were significantly under the previous year, significantly under the three-year average, and really starting to approach where we are in the fringes of those standard deviations. Here's your citywide shootings. And then we broke them down by the individual police precincts, just for comparison. And as we always do, we look for spatial anomalies and spatial clusters to redeploy and refocus our efforts if they're there. Second precinct, your third precinct, and fourth precinct. Our shooting victim demographics of our shooting victims, 31 were adults, eight were juveniles. There's broken down by race and sex. Shooting suspect demographics, and this is where we got concerned last year, and we were in front of this room, and we gave an extensive presentation about all the things not just the police department was doing, but all the city agencies to address juvenile violence. And it, I don't know if it was fortuitous timing, but it seemed like after that presentation, we really seen a marked decrease in juvenile shooting violence. So when we look at total shooting victims, this is the breakdown of those that were non-fatal and fatal, with the number of fatal ones at the bottom in dark blue. And then we will talk about our homicides. So last year, we had 13 homicides compared to 24 the previous year, for a 45% reduction, and the lowest number in the last four years. 10 of those were involved guns, and three of them were non-gun related. Spatial map of your citywide homicides, first precinct, second precinct, third precinct, and in the So this was what got all of our attention, is it wasn't just the shootings, but of those 13 homicides, five of them involved juvenile victims last year. There's the breakdown by sex and race, but equally concerning of our trigger pullers in homicides last year, six of them were juveniles. So I think what it showed us is all the efforts that the police department, Department of Human Services, and all the different entities, you know, our Parks After Dark, you know, we give credit to council, that was initiative that you all championed, it's paying dividends, because even though we were struggling for a small period of time, that has since tapered off. But it tells me that we were on the right track all along, realizing that we need to put efforts and attention on our juveniles. Homicide motives. Wasn't too many years back, I was in front of council, and the leading cause of homicide was drug disputes. I had young men and women that were dying over small amounts of marijuana. For some reason, that has abated. Right now, disputes. And when we go back and look, many of those disputes involve our young people, and they're playing out on social media. And I never thought that we would have dedicated sworn officers that sit around and scour Instagram on the daily to try to identify and disrupt what we think those individual beefs will turn into gunfights and gun battles on our streets. But that's the reality that we are in. So we take a look at the regional comparison again. 13 homicides, puts us middle of the pack with total numbers, but when we factor in the number of comparison per 100,000 residents, we are at the very bottom with only 2.9. And then what I really like us to focus on moving forward is that national comparison, because we know, as much as we favor our sister cities, they are not to the scale of Virginia Beach, they're not our size. So that's why we really try to look at those peer cities between 400 and 600,000 that have big city problems like we do in Virginia Beach. So if you look at the numbers, we are at the very bottom. I have a running competition with the chief of Mesa. Mesa is our size, and also one of the larger, safer cities, not the, because that is Virginia Beach. But I do have a competition, because I know he would like to take that title as the, one of the largest safe cities, and we own it, we claim it, we're not going to give it up. But on this one, I did kind of lose it, because when you factor in Mesa did beat us by 2/10 of a point. But I will still take the 2.9 per 100,000, which makes us a very safe city that we are. Let's talk about homicide clearance rates. National average is 52%. So of all the homicides committed in this country, one out of every two goes unsolved. There is a 91% average clearance rate in the City of Virginia Beach, but last year, the men and women of your homicide squad, and they do it, it's not just them, it's a partnership between the responding officers, forensics, the community, prosecutors, we cleared all 13 homicides with an arrest or otherwise positive closure. And I think that sends a message to the community and those families that are impacted by these heinous crimes. Gun recoveries. Vice Mayor, I know you always ask, so I wanted to make sure that it was included. And as you can see, that is something that is a huge focus for the department. I go out, something that deputy chiefs and I do is, in service every year, we try to take an hour out of that in-service, and if not myself, one of the deputy chiefs will go out, just so we get that FaceTime with our officers and see what their issues are, what their challenges. But going out also gives you, you know, that feel or flavor of the department. And where others were struggling, our folks are still motivated, they are engaging in proactive constitutional policing, and they know that they will be supported to go out and remove guns from those illegally possessing and illegally utilizing them in the City of Virginia Beach. And I think that's one of the reasons we have such great numbers. So when we look at total part one crime, that's property and violent together, we had a 5.5% reduction. But I saved the best slide for last, because violent crime, you know, that's what everyone wants to know about. That's why the media is here, they want to know what violent crime looks like in the City of Virginia Beach. That'll be the top news story, especially if it was up. Hopefully, it'll be the top news story, even though it is down significantly, because last year, in the City of Virginia Beach, we had a 22.3% decrease in violent crime, lowest in five years. So I'm going to end, and I'm going to leave that slide right up there for dramatic effect, and let everybody take that in. But if you look, that is the first year in a number of years that we've had less than 500 part one violent offenses, and can't do it without the team. I get to stand up here and take credit, but it's not me, it is the team, it is the supervision that pushes it down, the strategies, and supporting the men, women, the professional staff of this department, supported by this council, and all that you have done to provide technology. Technology has been a game changer for us. And I know I talk about it every time I come in here, but the Real-Time Crime Center and everything that this council has provided in the last four years, it's right there. I think the proof's before us, so thank you. Questions?
Wow, what a great report. And I've often said that there's no police department, but there are men and women any better than in this city. We have the finest of any city or any town in the U.S., and it's our men and women and the great leadership from you and your captains and all that are there. So we're extraordinarily grateful. And I spoke in front of a group this morning that was here from Charleston, bragged about all of you, and how you did a great job that you're doing. That we're so safe that people forget to lock their cars, because they forget how safe we are. So if people would remember to lock their cars, these numbers would be even better. I have a couple of questions. One is, so the larcenies, the top 10, what, can you describe what some of those are?
The vast majority of them are individuals going into our Walmarts, our Targets, and shoplifting. We made it quite known that our VABC stores always tend to fall in those top categories. That was one of the reasons that we brought a legislation proposal in front of this council that you graciously approved and sent up. Unfortunately, it didn't gain much traction up in Richmond, but that would have put the onus on responding and investigating these hundreds of offenses from our VAB stores, not on the VBPD, but on the law enforcement side of VABC. You know, they do have their own sworn officers, and we have kind of come to a stalemate on how much they're willing to change their business practices. And we have suggestions, but they also are reluctant to impact what they believe is their customer experience. So it really falls on how aggressive some of these places want to be. They will hire, some will hire off-duty officers to be in the stores during those peak hours to try to deter some of that. But you know, that is really, the biggest crime in the City of Virginia Beach is individuals stealing out of our retail stores.
Thank you, that's very helpful to know that. And the second one is, we've got to talk about Parks After Dark. You know, when we implemented, we thought, well, this is really going to help, but we had no idea how much. And then we've been waiting to find out, because it had to have a certain amount of time to pass to be able to get some type of data on that. Can you go into more detail on, if you can, on the effects that Parks After Dark is doing for us?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, and I think it's hard to quantify it with data. I mean, it's really, in talking to Lieutenant Loki and all the officers involved, it's more than just preventing crime, which we hope that it's going to do, because we invested, this council's invested a lot of money in the Parks After Dark program. But I think also what we can't forget is the relationship building for those individuals that are coming to Parks After Dark, establish the relationships, and not just the PD, because we have representatives from all of our city departments there, hopeful that that will build us, you know, the future of our young men and women. And you know, I spoke to Lieutenant Loki, and I asked him, I said, you know, with Parks After Dark coming up, you know, I know we're in February, but it'll be here before we know it, and we were expanding this year, how do we look, and what do we need to do? And we can do a better job of trying to get those young men and women that really need it out there. So I did email Dr. Robertson over at schools and asked them if he can start selling the program for us during the school year. And he was very gracious that absolutely, they will start pushing that out, especially in those schools by our different Parks After Dark locations. We can go back and pull numbers, but I don't think that's going to give us the picture. It's so much more than, did we prevent one shooting or, you know, one incident. It's a holistic approach.
It is, and there's a whole lot of extra benefits that have come from, but I've heard testimonials. But it'll be interesting when we have three locations this summer, see, I think these numbers- this summer, see, I think these numbers are going to be even better after that. Thank you so much.
AC, Michael and Cash.
I want to thank you and your team for what you do. It's a fantastic job. And I just want to, you need to keep in mind that I don't think Mesa has the millions of visitors that we do every summer. So I think you have something to brag about there.
I'm going to text them right now when we get out of here.
Tell me you can have an asterisk.
Exactly. I will come in with an asterisk next to Mesa next year. I hated to lose that one because we always use each other as that benchmark comparison. I mean, it's definitely Mesa, not Raleigh.
Thank you, Chief. I just am looking at these reports and it feels like every time you come back, you have better numbers to report. So, and that's not only a tribute to you, but as Vice Mayor noted, and we all, I'm sure we all agree, to the men and women who work with you, your colleagues in the police department and the entire public safety infrastructure. I have a specific question for you about LITA, the Law Enforcement Training Academy.
Yes, sir. Need a LITA.
We need a LITA. I want everyone to know that we need a LITA. But could you put a finer point on that? I was at LITA last night, just even, I was thinking about the men and women who are tasked with the things that, you know, these are numbers on a PowerPoint. What it actually means is that there's men and women out into the community who are stepping into the gap between dangerous people and peaceful people. And what does that actually mean? And how are they trained? And how are they resourced? And how are they supported in their work? But more specifically, I know you're involved with like, such as the Major Chiefs Association and other organizations that relate to your work. How does Virginia Beach stack up in terms of its law enforcement training center and academy facilities to support all those folks?
You know, when it comes to training, first and foremost, it's personnel dependent. And we've got some of the best trainers in the world. And I think we provide some of the best training for our law enforcement professionals. But we are asking them to do a very difficult, complex job. And we're asking them to produce because what they do out on the street impacts the city. I mean, if we want to be known as the largest, safest city our size, all of our public safety professionals and all of our city departments, but public safety does take, you know, that is one of the first things that people look at as schools and crime when they look at a city. And I think we do have an obligation to get them out of a 50, 60-year-old school building that is not equipped with the resources, the AV, that we need for a professional environment. And we tout ourselves as one of the best police departments, you know, not just Hampton Roads, not just East Coast, but we want to be a trendsetter. Some of the feedback, you know, we do host regional training. And it is a little dismaying to hear the comments from individuals that come from outside this police department to our training facility. And we do not have a 21st century environment that really speaks to what Virginia Beach is.
And it's miniature toilets, you know, it's miniature toilets.
I wasn't going to bring that up.
I'm going to bring it up. It's not even a place that we would send students, you know, it's not a place that we, that we, as a city, have decided to send students. And yet we send people who are, who are asking to do really the hardest work, among the hardest work in the entire city. But even more specifically, I mean, in addition to that, in the AV, but what are other cities of our size, do they have anything that's comparable? Or they all way leaps and bounds ahead of us? How are they, what do their training centers look like?
Most that I am familiar with either have a much more modern training facility. You know, I know Atlanta has spent a lot of money of late and they're getting ready to stand up their brand-new joint-use police and fire training facility down there. You know, I've been to Columbus, Ohio a number of times, and they have a world-class training facility. So coming to the beach, that was one of the areas where there is definitely a need for improvement. Because as much as we tout all the advancements and all the great work that we do and the personnel that we have, that is definitely one area where we are deficient compared to our peer cities and partners.
Thank you.
Cash and then Hush.
Chief, thank you for the presentation. Excellent presentation. As you know, I was campaigning on CIT-trained officers. So I was so proud to see the slide, presentation where 65% of Virginia Beach Police Department, all of the new recruits are going to be CIT-trained. That's brilliant. That speaks to a need that's present in our society. So thank you for being, leading the way on that. I had a resident ask me in College Park, asked me about neighborhood watches. Is that a thing that is coming back into existence? Or how will we, how will we address that specific?
If the council member, if there's an interest and a need, we would definitely work with them to establish some type of neighborhood watch.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
So Chief, Councilman. I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Lucci because I need a LITA. We got good with that. But I wanted to ask you, and I'm sort of pitching it to you, but the shooting range, I mean, good that we try to get it in one area? Are you okay? We bring it to Virginia Beach, are we okay going to Moyac still? I mean, you know, like what, I just think we need to keep talking about that part as well. It seems to me it should be a package, but I'm asking you what you would prefer.
In a perfect world, we would love to have a facility closer than Moyoc. But I do caution, as Moyoc has been a great partner to us.
I was trying to be careful there.
And as we move forward, we just signed another five-year contract. So we're going to be partners with Academy for the, you know, not-so-distant future. They offered us to keep in at the current rate. So we had to lock in because that's where we are right now. Right? If there is an opportunity to move it into the beach, we would definitely support that as long as it gives us everything that we have in Moyoc and we don't have to sacrifice.
That's what I was kind of getting at is like, you know, hopefully we're going to project, if we do, if and when, not if, but when we pick the place to put it, the new LITA, then we should be thinking five years or whatever. Hey, it's going to be a couple, we're not doing it tomorrow. So you want to mean it might work out where it all comes in at the same time?
It does. And I think, just want to reemphasize that, you know, our training, especially our firearms training, really prepares our young men and women. You know, Lord forbid they get involved in that incident none of us want to be involved in, but it saves their lives, it saves the lives of our citizens, and we cannot sacrifice on that training. And one of the things that, you know, we have to shoot at night, we have to shoot in the darkness, we shoot late, we're shooting at long distances, and we cannot sacrifice that just to have a closer range establishment.
And I just want to add, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you wanted to build a shooting range as part of a training academy complex, it'll extend out the permit process and approval process in a way that that'll become the critical path rather than the building. So I wouldn't think it'll be worth it.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor.
Well, I'd like to thank you, thank your team out there. Ask the team to please stand up for a minute so we can recognize that you're here. I give you a round of applause. Thank you. Into several of your graduations, notice the diversity that you have, not only from around here, but other places, and the whole buy-in of family members coming, fathers coming to help put on the badges and so forth, which is, you know, really wonderful. And again, thank you for the Park After Dark. Really love the program. We're all looking forward to that expansion.
As we are, Doctor, thank you.
And I love your final, lowest in five years.
Lowest in five. Need a LITA, lowest in five. Kind of like it's catchy.
Okay, anybody else? Chief, I just want to say thank you. And I'll tell you what a marvelous team we have in Virginia Beach. Fire, police, sheriff, emergency services. And I'll tell you what, if you haven't taken a tour of the 911 and see the operation, the technology there and there, and Commonwealth attorney, everybody working together. And I think, you know, it's bearing fruit. Thank you very much.
Mayor, thank you, council.
Hey, thank you. All right, we're moving on to council comments. Jennifer, would you like to finish them? We deferred you over.
From?
The previous conversation.
Sure. And then I do have, so let me, one quick, public safety update. Just want to shout out with the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, kind of update, but tomorrow is the Virginia Annual Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. So it's going to be terrible weather tomorrow, but these crossing guards are going to be out there looking after our kids. So if we can also applaud them. So if you're dropping off children tomorrow, when you stop for the crossing guards, also give them a wave and congratulate them on the day. And certainly, so to continue from earlier, for me, this isn't a partisan issue so much as we need to be realistic about the changing landscape of government. We've already seen efforts to stop the flow of federal funds and judges, federal judges having to tell this administration, you can't do that, you have to fund. So I know that we've gotten, it's so chaotic, it's back and forth. Perhaps one day there's an order to stop something, the next day Congress says no. So for the sake of our citizens and for the sake of our residents, I don't see it as partisan. I see it as it's the reality of what's playing out. To be good stewards of, as decision-makers for this city, we have to look after our residents. And so I think it won't hurt to be prepared and to be proactive, to hope for the best, but have a contingency plan that should the federal, the flow of federal dollars stop, we have something in place that we're not caught off guard and our citizens are then in a state of chaos because we weren't realistic about the possibility of that happening.
Once again, this is why we have the conversations. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I don't disagree with anything Mrs. Rouse just said. What I do take issue with and what I did express previously, and I stand by what I said, was let's just think about how it's delivered, not just among staff and among each other as colleagues, but in consideration of the diversity of views that exist throughout Virginia Beach. So for example, when we're starting every week with sentences such as, with all the craziness coming out of Washington, well, we could have, there was a lot of craziness coming out of Washington for the previous four years. And we didn't start off every other sentence with, with that type of commentary inside this room. I think it's crazy that we added trillions and trillions and trillions of dollars to the national debt in the last four years. And so, I mean, we've done a really good job of working together across partisan and other lines, demographics, age. We're just coming together in a really productive way as a council member. So I think injecting what, subjectively or objectively is partisan politics into the conversations about the city's relationship with the federal government is not helpful in building those types of bridges that we're going to need to be responsive to the changing landscape of government. But the landscape of government changes. And, and some people have issues with what's going on right now or what has gone in the past. And some people, such as myself, are happy to see, without getting into specifics, a sense of responsibility about federal spending that we haven't seen previously. And that's all that I'm saying. I will continue to say it, I will continue to call it out. We're doing a great job of building bridges and working together to solve neighborhood, city of Virginia Beach issues. That is why I'm sitting around this table, that's why, what I came here to serve. But if we want, if you don't want to have national partisan political debates, then don't have national partisan political debates here at this table.
Barbara, and then Hush.
Apparently, something I said was taken wrong. I was addressing this particular issue, which is going to be one that is going to require billions of dollars. And I think it's only right that we have some input from what would have to be our partner if we're going to move forward in this fashion. One of the things that we talked about at the retreat was not overpromising people that we were going to do things. When we listened to this presentation, which we heard today, and we talked about all of the roads that would have to be raised and all of the blood walls that would have to be put around the communities, I'm particularly thinking of my area with Sandbridge and Back Bay, it's tremendous. I really think we need to, maybe we might say, well, this is something we need to study and we need to be prepared for, but I'm not so sure this is what the direction should be. And I was addressing this particular project because I think we're assuming that this is what the federal government is going to fund for us. We look at what Norfolk wound up with, and I'm not sure they're getting or going to be able to do what their study said. I really think we need to look at this before we go a whole lot further. Yes, we've got this study underway and it needs to be continued, but to assume that this is what we want to plan for Virginia Beach's future, I think we might want to slow it down a little bit and look at it some more. I just hate for us to go too far along the path and then we, we're kind of stuck with something. I know I've heard a lot of comments from people that say, well, look what Norfolk is going to have to do or what their proposal was. Is this really what our folks in Virginia Beach are going to want to do? And I know we're going to be having some public information sessions and so forth. But I think it's something that is extremely intense. And I just was commenting that I kind of think this is a project that we might want to talk about a lot more. But I think it's also important that, and I've said it often, about the other levels of government that we don't have associations with. And I have been saying for years now that we need to go back to what we used to do and have regular meetings with our General Assembly, state counterparts and our congressional counterparts. I know back in the Owen Pickett days, we used to have breakfast two or three times a year to hear what he was willing to or what he was supporting. I think we've totally lost touch with our counterparts at the other levels of government that we need to have close associations with. We need to hear from them what they want us, what they would like and what we can do. And I really think we need to establish, and again, I've said this so many times, regular times that we have meetings with our state counterparts and our congressional counterparts because we all need to work together. We depend on them for funding for a lot of things. And we need a better relationship. We used to have a pretty good relationship and we used to have regular meetings with the state counterparts and the federal, and we've gotten away from it. We need to get back to that. I certainly didn't mean it to be partisan. I am the least partisan person around this table.
Let me just say this, you know, I say this often, you know, we can't control what goes on in Washington or Richmond, or even the Commonwealth everywhere else, but we have a say in Virginia Beach. And in spite of everything, in spite of COVID, in spite of inflation, you know, we're recognized as one of the best places in this nation to live. And that's for a reason. And I think the important thing about building collegiality and things, it's not so much what you say, but sometimes how we say it and how we're perceived and everything. But the entire thing is that, you know, this is what I believe. I think, you know, at this table right now, working with an effective management team and working with an effective group of engaged residents out here, we have quite a good situation going. But I just want to thank everybody. This, this conversation we just had, perhaps in another city, another area, could have been a lot different. But here we are, mutual respect, I think is what's going to take us to the next level. Okay, Hush.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Mayor, maybe we should, maybe hear from our
Mayor, maybe we should, maybe hear from our congressional lobbyist at some point, when it, when it's appropriate, but-
Lobbyist is in the calendar to come, for your council in March.
Perfect. So, but my point here, this is now, lays on my eighth community meeting for District Six, Thursday, this Thursday night at Lita Law Enforcement Training Academy.
Probably do that.
Yes, use the restroom before you come.
We'll have some porta potty, Sheriff.
They don't even flush really sometimes.
Thursday night, 6:30, doors open at 6:00, District Six Community Meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy.
Hey, I have three things I'd like to bring up. One is, most, most communities, most cities have an ordinance that require the finished side of any fencing to face out, especially along a public street. We don't. So, you know, I'd like to see if we can't have an ordinance to say that any, any fencing that's along a public road would have to have the finished side of that fencing facing towards the street.
So we can talk about it.
Moving forward.
Moving forward.
Yeah.
And secondly, we have a city ordinance that any pool that is 37 feet, or greater than 37 feet, requires a lifeguard. That ordinance was put in several years ago, and the 37 feet was a pretty arbitrary number. There's no magic to it. We do have one pool that is at Seagate, which is at the intersection, it's a, it's a condo community at the intersection of Shore Drive and Great Neck Road. They have a swimming pool that is 39 feet. And it, this pool is limited to the use of their residents only. And I would like to see us change that ordinance. And it's my understanding that that is the only pool in the city of Virginia Beach that falls between 37 and 40 feet.
Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, just want to sign on to what Mr. Cummings has said. We sent council a memo on this. It was, they requested this of the body to get it adopted, but it was around that period of time when District Eight representatives was transitioning off. From our knowledge, what we've been able to find and from what we've been able to get from the Health Department who inspects and provides this permit, what we can find is that this is the only pool that has that impact to our knowledge right now.
So I'd like to see that ordinance go to 40 feet or greater.
Okay. And the third-
The Health Department said they can't, they won't issue the variants, you know, but the code can be changed.
You had another one?
The third one is, on our open mic nights, we brought this up at the CIP retreat and we kind of tabled it. And I think I have, I'd like to propose something that I think we'd, we'd find favorable. Currently, we do open mic, the first meeting of every month. State law requires us to do it four times a year. The concern is, is that we limit it four times a year, that we would be limiting the citizens' ability to speak to the council on issues that are germane to the city. So I'd like to propose that four times a year, we have open mic as we do now, that it would be open for anyone to come and speak on any subject they would like to speak on, just like we do now. The other eight times a year, we would limit open mic to items that were previously recognized. They have to state their name, they have to state what they wanted to speak about, and they would be limited to issues that address city business. So we're not limiting anyone's ability to talk, it's just that if they wanted to talk about something that wasn't city business or wasn't germane to, something to do with the city, it'd be limited to those four times a year that we're required to do by state law.
Yeah, I got to ask a question, Mika. Since I've become mayor, Mark Stiles has often counseled me on, you know, allowing people to speak. Does that, Mark, would that type of restriction ask muster?
It's legally sufficient in the sense that you are defining the scope of what may be addressed upfront. So it's a limited public forum, and you are describing what can be addressed in that forum. The difficulty that will exist is determining what the definition of city business is, and it's going to fall on the chair of the meeting to make that call. And in making that call, there is some jeopardy. But it can't, it can't be, it can't be, it can't be legally done, but it is, it is going to involve drawing a difficult line, and we're going to have to be very, we're going to have to be very thoughtful in the way we define what is and what is not city business.
I'll tell you, I think, you know, Stacy, I think some of the ideas you have have merit. Why don't we maybe schedule, you know, a discussion on this during the workshop and really kind of flush it out? Okay, that'd be good.
What are the other things?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, but I think the other things, it sounds like what Mr. Cummings asked for, does council have any issue if the city attorney's office and my office worked to put together ordinance adjusting the, the pool length and the other ordinance was-
The outside-
I have one too.
Okay. Okay, Michael?
Sorry, I, I guess I have a question about that. It's not that I have an objection, but let me give you an example. I knew someone who had a fence and they liked to look at the finished side and they didn't. So why couldn't they? I mean, who does it hurt?
Well, if you had a hole-
Or if you're paying for the fence.
If you had a whole lot, it's, it's, it's an unattractive view from the road. And if it became, right now, it's not prevalent because people don't even know that we don't have an ordinance, but, you know, if it became, it, it could become an issue where it would be unsamely throughout the entire city. And most, most cities already have this ordinance before it becomes an issue.
It's not that I oppose it, it's just, I'm just thinking about, you know, a person's right to have, look at the side of the fence that they want.
I, I have a question off of this, if you don't mind, Mike, as far as-
Yeah.
The, so I, I was under the impression, and because I've been a part of it in Woodstock like four or five times, that the outside, because you're talking about, you're not talking about two houses inside, you're talking about the outside house, the one that you're going to see from Woodstock Road or something like that. We have other, right now, currently, we have other rules that apply for that already, I believe.
I don't believe we have an ordinance that says-
Be the inner out, I'm talking height.
You, you do have rules regarding, you do have rules regarding height and setback and things like that, but you don't have a rule that says for a, for a street-facing fence, the finished side or the side with, that the posts are not all, uh, must face out. And, you know, I did look in, well, at least I looked in Chesapeake. Chesapeake does have that, and I believe some other jurisdictions do. So it's, with respect to the side fences, you know, on an interior lot line, where it's between you and your neighbor, I think you can put the pretty side towards you and you're the one who built the fence.
And in that case, they can finish both sides of the fence if it's that important.
Good.
I'd go sponsor for that.
All right, Amelia, and then Cash.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I have three things to mention. As you know, on Monday, in honor of Rosa Parks, HRT had free rides on all of their facilities with a strain, librarian buses, so that happened, and it kept one seat up at the front empty in honor of her. The second I have, they had a nice, and a lot of people didn't know about this, that the young man, Willis Augusta Hodges, did a, through the Virginia Beach Historic Preservation Commission, at the Hendrix, where they unveiled. And Mayor Dyer was there, he spoke, I spoke, and Dr. Cassandra, as well as Councilman Remick attended. It was a very informative session. He seemingly was the first from Princess Anne County to be the first African American elected to the Virginia Constitutional Convention, which of course now is Virginia Beach. And then the third I want to mention is, we're looking at a resolution, and I hope I can get the rest of our council members, because as we're looking at first, we mustn't forget some of the people that still are around. So we're looking, and he was elected in 1876, or 1867, and then it wasn't until the 90s that we started having more African Americans in the council. So we have a resolution, and our sponsors, I have Councilwoman Rouse and Councilman Green, who, and approval from the mayor, that we have a resolution on February 18th that would include all of our first elected African Americans to City Council, our first judges, African American judges, for this is to do with Virginia Beach, as well as our first, we have leadership management that were first African Americans, one I'm looking at right over there, city manager, female deputy city manager back there, and several others, but that we have a resolution to also honor our own. And I hope I can get a nod from the rest of you so we can get the resolution done.
Let's go ahead and get it going on. And Cash, and then Barbara.
Just want to say, this past weekend, I was at Applebee's off of Kim'sville, and that's our, that's in our district, District Seven, and I was invited to meet Top Teens of America. And they do a lot of events at Applebee's in the morning time before they actually open. They're a service-oriented group, and so I went down there to, to meet and greet the parents and the leaders of Top Teens of America, and they are a giving organization. And so they collect books and they give back to the homeless, they are keen on Hampton Road Sickle Cell Association, they just do a lot of service work. And Chesapeake has claimed them because that's where they house them, but I, I gave them such a, an experience of being on the other side in Virginia Beach that they now want to do some work in Virginia Beach. So that name is Top Teens of America. So I just want to give a shout out to them.
Great, outstanding. Barbara?
Well, we had a really great presentation by the Police Department today, and so we've got to give equal time to our other wonderful Public Safety Department. We had a great presentation in our packet on the Fire Department. This is their annual report, and I just think it's extremely well done. And it has a lot of really good information in here that, that I think is important, and particularly looking at all the fire stations and what their responses have been. This was really telling to me to look at each one of them, to see, you know, their engines, their tankers, we're the only ones that have tankers in the 4th Battalion, the ladder trucks and the fireboats and so forth. So I really want to compliment the, the department on putting this together and, and having such a, a great description of your training and, and so forth. But one of the things that I noticed is not in here, because I had been looking at this one in our capital improvement listing. The third item down is fire apparatus. And, and this report really doesn't talk a lot about our fire apparatus, other than to name the, the responses. But looking at this, this item, because I've been, like I say, mulling over this, and I see it's a nineteen and a half million dollar item, to replace fire apparatus. And I know we've been through a lot of discussion about the ambulances, and, and I'm kind of thinking that we might have similar issues with the Fire Department apparatus in the inflation factor of what a fire truck is costing these days, and the fact that once we order something, it takes a couple of years to get it. And so I'm really wanting to know what the condition is of the department with its fire apparatus, particularly, like I say, looking at this item in here, and I know this is just additional, so that means we've got others in the, in the, in the CIP. Because I, I know that this equipment is susceptible to being down part of the time, and, and I just want to make sure we, we are not delaying purchases and, and work that needs to be done, because then I guess getting parts is also pretty time-consuming. And so getting the parts and, and getting the repairs and getting a, a new fire truck or something is, is not something that you do overnight. And, and I don't want us to get in a situation where we're behind and we find out that we have issues, because we certainly, you know, we've got great people in the department, we've got to make sure they've got the equipment that they need. And so I was just wondering if we could have some more information about that part of it. And when I mentioned the tankers, you know, of course, in the, in the rural area where we don't have fire hydrants, if we don't have tankers, we don't have water and we don't have anything. And I want to make sure we've got what we need to, to do the work that needs doing.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. Miss Mayor, just on that specific topic, when facilities presented, because the fire apparatus is included in the buildings and assets portion of the CIP, facilities, facilities did allude to the same point that Mrs. Henley raised. There is a significant ask that the Fire Department and, and Fleet and facilities are asking for to plus up the number of funds needed so that we can buy fire apparatus, because as Miss Henley mentioned, some fire apparatus takes two years to build, and if you buy it now, they're telling you, you're not going to get it for 36 months, 48 months. So it is something that we're navigating. The price increases are going up significantly. If we had a budget that authorized us to get four fire apparatus, now we can only buy one to two, right? You know, so it is something that we're navigating, and we're trying to figure out how to plug that significant cost gap as well. Miss Henley, it may, it may take some time, but we can probably get more detailed information out to the council. And if we can include it as part of the budget presentation that they'll do, we'll try to see if we can get it done earlier than that, or at least get a report to council so you can have it, so you can ask the questions when you get the budget presentation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me just mention something. When I started this job back in July of 2004, one of the main complaints we heard about was not being able to keep our children in this region. But yesterday at 11 o'clock in the morning on Corporate Landing Road, we got the groundbreaking for, I think it was four subsea cables, or seven altogether, coming in. And this could take us to the next level about bringing those technology jobs in and the broadband. And so, Rosemary, I'm going to ask you not only to talk about the broadband, but the speed of these cables with the motion pictures you brought up yesterday.
Well, every, every picture ever made, ever, could be shown in its entirety in less than five minutes. Just kind of my boy. And also the Richmond, it's going there, there's a lot of activity. John Martin came down from RVA yesterday because a whole connectivity from here up to Loudoun County and RVA, it's an incredible marketing tool. Don't forget the ring that's being built out. And portions of the ring are going to be ready, probably another month or so, and the rest of the ring should be ready by next summer. It's, it's run into a few glitches here and there, because there's a lot of bridges that need to be crossed and rover crossings and roads and permitting and that sort of thing. But it's, it's all coming together. And the ring also has a new executive director. His name is Marcellus Nixon, and he comes very well qualified and experienced. And he's going to be there to really take us to the next level, which the timing is really good. The last one has been great, Steve DeBerry. He's ready to retire, and so this will be a good transition, but this is going to be a big help, and it should save us money too. It's supposed to save us money for us to be able to tie into the ring of executive time in the ring, as well as all of our education facilities.
Now, that's a, that's a significant movement. Okay, folks, let's get into closed. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exceptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance- for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.3711A1. And that's appointments for council, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. So I have a motion. Second. All right.
Catherine Voluski.
Aye.
Catherine Cummings. Catherine Henley.
Aye.
Catherine Hudson.
Aye.
Catherine Jackson-Bray.
Aye.
Catherine Reddick.
Aye.
Catherine Austin.
Aye.
Catherine Rouse.
Aye.
Catherine Schultz.
Aye.
Catherine Wilson.
Aye.
Catherine Dyer.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, minute of call to reconvene. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Second. Call your name.
Councilor Leachy.
Aye.
Councilor Cummings.
Aye.
Councilor Hodgson.
Aye.
Councilor Jackson Green.
Aye.
Councilor Rymon.
Aye.
Councilor Ross Hammond.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Shulman.
Aye.
Chairwoman Wilson, aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.